And one more button. Mr. Lambert, you're all set. Have a good meeting.
Thank you. Good evening. Happy New Year. Welcome to Thursday, January 12, 2023. Select Planning Board meeting here in the Select Board hearing room, Central Planning Board. We hear the Zoom hybrid, you know, on Facebook. The Central Planning Board is committed to providing an environment of respect and obedience. We ask all members to interact politely and agree when there is disagreement. We value the participation of our community and want all participants, including marginalized and the minoritized communities, to feel welcome and respected. We ask our community veterans and all who participate to finish this year just to support and respect our community. And this game of meetings being recorded is streamed live on Facebook. Get our last members here. Thank you. We have a post with Jen for your second, second favor.
Hi.
Good evening. At six thirty, we have a public hearing, a site plan revision, a special permit. Location is building in Stonewall Permit in the Village Center, in the neighboring district, Green Bush, Gateway District, New Driftway, France, the Village. Well, this president will lock down.
That's awesome. For the record, I'm Attorney Steve Gardner. I represent the applicant. As you know, we're here to pick up where we left off last time. We made some progress upon these site plan revisions based on John's peer review, as well as address some of the parking concerns that have come up since then, and Jamie has redesigned the fifth floor from the top. We'll start the drag on the site plan. We'll go into traffic because we're waiting at Karen's desk, patio desk, and then Jamie will follow up again, and then we can go over the fifth floor together. And Ian, how the building was reconfigured as to accommodate the fifth floor removal of the pass. Anyway, is it correct?
Thank you. For the record, registered engineer Morse Engineering. The plans, the latest set of plans that we had were dated November 11, 2022. These revisions since the last meeting, obviously, the building has changed. We have reduced the overall number of units from 25 originally down to 22. Jamie will work the building layout shortly. But secondly, with respect to the parking, what we did is we added the EV parking spaces, a total of four of them at the front of the parking lot at that location. Revised ADA ramps at the connecting sidewalks at the driveway locations. We've reduced the entrance grade off of old Driftway for the first 10 feet being at 2%. We added a directory sign at the front of the project to direct people to the commercial spaces versus residential parking spaces. Overall, the amenity space was increased, the amenity space that we have being at the front of the building here. There's an outdoor dining terrace. We have outdoor yard space. And then largely amenity space on the rooftop of the building, which Jamie will cover. We added a transformer pad location. Transformer pad would be in the corner of the property, and then made some other minor changes with respect to drainage. We did receive John's December 12 review. We have not updated plans since that or awaited tonight's comments, as well as we have designed a review board, I believe, scheduled for end of January, beginning January. I'll turn it over to our traffic consultant, Scott.
Good evening. Scott Thornton with Vaness Associates. We prepared the traffic assessment for the project. And just as a sort of chronology, we had established or developed an initial traffic assessment, which was submitted, I believe, July, submitted shortly thereafter. We received peer review comments where, I think that was in October, where the peer reviewer was looking for a conventional traffic assessment, something looking at counts of existing locations, the trip generation review of grass data. So we went out and we collected traffic counts of the intersections that were requested by the peer reviewer, which was Stockbridge Road, Old Driftway, and Old Driftway, New Driftway, as well as looking at the driveways for the site. And did those counts in November, did a full traffic assessment, looked at operations in the intersections of Stockbridge and Old Driftway and New Driftway and Old Driftway, as well as the driveway locations. And we submitted that study. We received some peer review comments on that study. I know that the peer reviewer is online as well tonight. They'll, I'm sure you can actually hear what they have to say as well. But our, in terms of the updated comments that we received from them, I think in general, they were, the traffic study that was submitted in November met most of their concerns. There were some items related to trip generation and to site circulation, DPW, and also had some questions about site circulation. We're continuing to work through those comments in coordination with the site engineer, and we expect to have a formal response letter back to the peer reviewer shortly following the meeting. I'll turn it back over to Mr. Jamie.
In the calendar, we're actually architects. So even the architectural updates that we made. So we've got the new improved rendering of the building, which is taken kind of from the corner view. We've always seen the building as almost having two faces to it, so trying to give that perspective of how you might see it coming down the road. The main difference with this new rendering is that we're showing the level change that we would have, sort of taking advantage of that to create a wall, so that this corner little patio courtyard area that was posing would be a little more separated from the sidewalk and road, have an actual rail. We think that would be a pretty nice part of the amenities, especially with that update that we have. Going through the plans, changes to the first level were essentially to update and correct the first floor residential units that we had that were too close to the front of the property, which would be at 60 feet. So we ended up actually reducing from four to three due to that. And they're now about 700, at average, 700 square foot one bedroom units. These would be at least these two, but maybe all three would be planned to be accessible units as well, even though I think we would need two, given that we have just over 20 units for the building. Those could be on any level. We just, you know, the first level is always a great place to do it just because we know the need to take the elevator. Then the commercial space was updated. They have more square footage now, which is about 6,500 square feet total gross area. One of the other big changes that we made to the design was that, you know, we, as discussed last time, have taken away the penthouse unit. In doing so, we actually decided to make some revisions to the circulation core, which used to be really on the back corner of the building to accommodate the penthouse unit. Now we have it more in the middle, which allowed us to really clean up the architecture on the back corner of the building, which we thought was kind of important. That was probably one of the weakest, you know, points of the building from the design standpoint, so. Otherwise, this level, I think, is fairly similar, other than some of the minor revisions made due to the circulation. The third floor as well, we made some two and one bedroom units. On the fourth level, we've lost one unit just with the revision. We now just have two twos and a single three bedroom unit on that level. And we also, you know, still have that outdoor amenity space accessible to the old residents. Then on the fifth level, as was sort of discussed at the last meeting, what we are proposing to provide is simply an access structure or an access pavilion to a rooftop amenity space. So that basically consists of an elevator, the egress stair, and what would be a required accessible bathroom in that structure, opening out to a small, like, I believe, 15-foot covered portion, where, you know, residents could use that as a little type of patio space under a roof, and then possibly some kind of a sport court or other outdoor amenity area that the residents would have access to on that top level, rather than the apartment that was previously posted. I believe heights of the levels are the same as the last time. So, you know, if there are any questions on that, we can certainly answer. We're under the high requirements for the first floor, first four floors. And in doing so, you know, the front E line of the building is quite low compared to what it needs to be. It's, we had 19 foot 10 to that first gutter line where the main roof would start. Gives the building an overall very, not a very tall look to it, if you can see the building down the road. So yeah, this is kind of where the back corner was really cleaned up, allowing the hip roof coming around. You see the top pavilion there, another little hip roof. You know, this thing on the top, this little circulation pavilion is meeting or exceeding all of those original apartments and being set back from the edge of the building so that nothing can be really seen from below, so. That basically sums up the.
Karen, would you like to start us off, or would you like us to?
Well, we do have our, we do have our peer review, site and traffic.
Karen, first in.
First in brought us our traffic, so wherever you want to start, we should delve in.
Why don't we start with our guest online? Good evening, Ms. Bron.
Good evening to you as well. Thanks for having me, especially virtually this time, since I'm a little ways away from Situate. But as was mentioned by Vaness, we did submit an initial review letter to the town. I believe back in October, we did receive responses to our initial comments. Supplied a secondary review letter, I believe, back in mid-December. As was mentioned, our initial review letter ultimately asked for a full traffic impact and access study, which the applicant has since submitted that information and then some other information that we did request. One of the bigger items in the traffic study was discrepancies in the trip generation assumptions in terms of number of units, what kind of land use they use for the office commercial space, that sort of stuff. So we did ask for the applicant to update that information. And it'll sort of have a snowball effect on what the findings are in terms of capacity analyses and stuff like that. So we did ask for the applicant to update that information. In regards to the site plan, we still had a few outstanding comments as well. We noted that there wasn't a stop line included on the old Driftway exit on their original site plan set. They did include a stop line on this plan set. However, it's only located two feet back from the crosswalk. Ideally, we'd like to be four feet back from the crosswalk because any vehicles that are stopping at the stop line, that really prevents them from overhanging into the crosswalk and sort of hindering pedestrians walking by there. We also noted that based on the traffic analysis at that driveway, vehicles won't be significantly delayed exiting that driveway. So any impact to park cars by pushing back that stop line a little should be minimal. We also recommend that the planning board consider designating the parking spaces, the parallel spaces along that driveway exit as employee only. What that will do is it'll really minimize the turnover there in those spaces and help prevent any conflicts, maybe from acute vehicle blocking into or out of that parking spot. The applicant also updated the plans to show a 10-foot-long level landing area on the old Driftway exit. We still recommend that this level landing area be a minimum of 25 feet just to accommodate at least one car length there, so that the car length is on sort of a level landing area or a 2% or less slope. We noted on the site plan that there were, on the landscape plans rather, that there were trees proposed within the new Driftway right away. We just asked that the applicant ensure that those trees are sufficient caliper so that any of the canopies don't interfere with sightlines exiting that driveway. One of the larger issues we had was the location of the new Driftway driveway. If you look on the site plan, it's sort of wedged in between two opposing driveways, so it sort of falls right in the middle there. And what happens in that situation is it creates a number of turning movement conflicts, particularly pertaining to left turns both into and out of the site driveway, as well as the site driveways opposite. So we do recommend that that driveway align with the South Shore Westerly driveway, and this will really minimize any train movement conflicts entering and exiting the site for both across the way and for this site. I believe the Situate DPW did have the same sort of comment actually on the site plan, at least pertaining to that driveway. And then we did include one additional comment that wasn't in the initial review letter. And we have reviewed some other projects in the area, and we know that this area is building up rather quickly. So it's hard to really, you know, gauge traffic volumes in the future. I mean, as traffic engineers, we can estimate as best we can. But we do know that a concern of the town is a lot of the changing traffic patterns and whatnot in the area. So we do ask that the applicant perform a traffic monitoring study, and that should be done within six months of achieving at least 90% occupancy of the site. And what the traffic monitoring study would do is they would reanalyze the new Driftway and old Driftway intersection in terms of operations, and they would do that by counting new traffic, getting new traffic data at that intersection specifically during the weekday morning and evening peak hours. And they'd rerun analysis there and compare to what they show on the traffic study. And if intersection operations are worse than projected, applicant should prepare signal timing and phasing plans to improve operations and commit to implementing them after review and approval by the town. And this should be done within about six months after submitting the traffic monitoring study. So that's just a quick summary of some of the outstanding comments we had in our second review letter. We haven't received the responses back, as was mentioned earlier, but I'll be happy to answer any questions the board or the applicant might have regarding our review.
Thank you very much.
I think we should try to segment this so that I think we should, the board should ask any traffic question and make some decisions on traffic before we move on, so that the applicant can have a branch of the way to go.
Just had a few questions. The traffic study, and this is probably a peer review, but our traffic study identified a whole bunch of specific developments that they made adjustments for. One thing that wasn't adjusted for was the commercial gas station. And I'm wondering if that is going to have an impact. The gas station and the convenience store and the coffee shop there.
That might be a good question for Vaness to answer. I'm not sure specifically if they included that information in their updated counts.
Yeah. So when was, when was the gas station occupied and active?
November, November of this year.
Yeah.
November 22.
Yeah, so our counts were done in November, so we included the, I'll double check the dates, but we probably accounted for that development in the counts themselves.
Okay. So it wasn't in the development, it wasn't in specific developments, it was an baseline?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Can you just confirm that?
I will confirm that, yeah.
Let's see. And then I note, and maybe Karen, you have some insight to this, that the traffic study said that there were no roadway improvement projects planned in the area. And I had thought that the town was considering making modifications up here. So is that?
I'm not aware that the town is, where, where do you think the?
Particularly where the gas station is.
I'm not aware that the town is proposing any modifications at all right now. Right now, the signal timing has to be looked at when true to 60%, the signal timing has to be looked at. The gas station already did their turning lane on the ground. And right now, we're still inconclusive about the unmitigated impact. That's still, that's still up for discussion if it really exists or not, but waiting for the town to get more information because the traffic engineer went out two times and couldn't observe that situation. It could have just been that it was due to the new opening, people got a little overzealous and, you know, blocked the intersection.
Okay, so there's nothing, as far as you know, there's nothing.
As far as I know, but I will double check.
And then I guess, you know, I guess I wait to hear back on the comments that have been made already by the peer review.
Yeah.
Anything that was said there that you see as something, is not something you could comment?
No, no. In fact, we have, we've been working on these comments. We have a lot of them. We have the trip generation that your viewer mentioned. We've addressed. And, you know, in terms of the, in terms of the monitoring study, that's, that's a pretty common requirement that a lot of towns and Mass U F E has as well, so that's something that we don't see.
I was thinking specifically about the 25-foot level landing and realignment of the driveways and all that.
Yeah, I know that, I know that Greg can probably touch on that, but there's a specific reason for the driveway being where it is.
Yeah, that location was chosen actually because on the true company project here, on the proof plans, there's an exit onto New Driftway. That, however, isn't being constructed, and so we were trying to maintain distance to that with our driveway. There's no reason it couldn't shift over though, now that that's not.
So they're not even doing it.
Doesn't, doesn't appear to be so here.
So realigning the driveway should be something you could do.
Absolutely.
And where's the 25-foot level?
So the 25-foot level is at this location right here. I'd have to look at that a little bit more closely. I know that there are some new retaining walls along the lot line there between us and the true company, and I want to check those grades. I've reached out to their superintendent to do some survey work there.
Okay.
Yep.
I guess I defer to our traffic folks to sort most of the stuff, since it sounds like a lot of it's technical and achievable. I guess I'm with Steve, and just by the questions regarding actual driveway layout changes, this is a lot more substantive in terms of the site design, but it sounds like maybe that's something that can't be looked into further, so I'm all set.
A mention was made of the parking spaces along the back of the building. And my concern is, they're supposed to be theoretically for the office space or whatever, but I'm not even sure that there should be parking spaces there because those are apartments or condos or whatever that exit, enter into parking spaces. And I'm not sure that that's truly a really good idea.
I'm sorry, Anne, I'm not following what you're saying.
If you look, if you look at this.
Can you maybe?
So on the, on the ground level, there are three one-bedroom ADA accessible apartments along the back here. And I think the point is that when you come out those doors, which are by these triangles, you're coming out onto a sidewalk, but then adjacent to the sidewalk, there are parking spaces.
There are parking spaces, and I have no problem with that. And traffic laws and regulations, while they have not necessarily put it in writing, it didn't come from the fire chief under circumstances, I wonder if that should not be finally. And that's something I think I want you all to think about.
We've met with the fire chief.
I understand that you have, but I have a real problem with people coming out of apartments or condos onto a five-foot sidewalk, and there's a car parked right there, and it might not even be their car.
If, if those three spaces were reserved for those three apartments, which we intend on numbering as parking spaces, so you have a dedicated space, so your ADA accessible space is directly in front of your apartment, would that be acceptable in your opinion?
I am not sure. It depends. If anybody's like me, I can't parallel park to save my life. So it is a concern, and I'm just letting them know that's a concern of mine.
I think Greg's suggestion is a good one to maybe dedicate those spaces to with the units. I mean, it makes sense, and, you know, quite feasible.
I guess just for the, like, the top four patio area, like the patio pavilion area, just one thing I was thinking of is, you guys considered, like, putting concrete or some type of concrete, like, pan so that people were, like, bringing barbecues up and stuff? I've seen a lot of houses, like, especially.
We're not being.
Oh, we're just. Oh, all right. I'll say that for later. It's just a thought.
Same thought. I do have a couple of traffic issues.
Okay.
Traffic issue. I think the street trees also need to be a branching kind of minimum of seven feet so that you can see under the trees. I'm wondering why the intersection of Countryway and Stockbridge was not added to the traffic study because if cars come out of the exit onto Old Driftway, they go up to the Driftway-Stockbridge intersection, they're likely going to go down to the Countryway intersection and get to the rotary that way if the light is congested. So I'm wondering why that was not added to the, and I think that should be considered, you know.
That wasn't, it looked like they looked at that intersection.
I didn't think Countryway and, I didn't think Countryway and Stockbridge. They did Countryway.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
They did Countryway and, they did the tops of the hill, but they didn't do down the hill.
Yeah, yeah. That's a, that's a tough.
And so that's, that's a tough intersection. If the light does get congested, people are already doing that now, so I really question, should that not be?
It's a replacement take a left, too.
Right, and so if the spaces along the are to be designated for handicap, there'll be a fully handicap accessible route along the side of the walk, correct?
It would have to be.
Okay. I think it might be also a good idea to put bollards at the, on the other side of the building where the parking is head on in. I think there probably should be some bollards in light of what has happened at Derby Street and is seems to be happening more across the country, people kind of running things. It might be a smart idea.
The only question I have is, when we did the traffic study, how many ambulances were coming out of that, Carol? Some cases dead, some cases not. So I mean, I don't know. So how that lines up is a little sketchy, don't you? I assume you tried to align things, and I don't know what happens now when an ambulance comes out of the, do they have bright lights? I don't know. At least they died. Does anybody know? I have no idea.
There isn't a light at their access, so I mean, as long as their emergency lights are on, I would think they give way.
Okay, all right, just who was wondering, um, as we know, traffic, so we're suggesting down here and Karen has suggested that we take some of our money and do a big traffic study, probably from Widows Walk on down to the Rotary. Um, so do you have a lot of suggestions or questions?
Wow, it's quarter mile.
I believe so, yeah, yeah, we're just clarifying location, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and and as far as the the study areas, we were, we were reacting to the peer review comments where they identified the locations for studies, so that's that's what we, that's what we, that's why the study area is what it is, but we'll, we'll take a look at that section as well.
And I think it's a good suggestion.
I have two questions, not really, uh, how wide is that sidewalk on the wall?
Well, realistically, it's five to six feet.
And how high is the wall?
I think it's highest point, it's about thirty inches.
Traffic, though, traffic. Does anybody have any comments and a problem about traffic, about what about traffic? Yes, sir. Please identify yourself.
Steve Bjork, I'm just curious, when the planning board sent this out to have consultants look at the zoning has changed, which is creating this area down there, why didn't they do a traffic study, what's gonna happen for every project down there? Didn't they look at all the intersections when you guys created the zone?
You just was, you just with the projects.
But you know what the project will gonna be, I mean, you just.
But you gave a density of the amount of units, you know how much area there is down there, one of the most important things would have been traffic.
Yeah.
So before they created the density, you should have looked at traffic for all of these projects, not just this one, but everything that can happen in that one area. So all the intersections should have been looked at, I would think. I mean, any good consultant would have said that, maybe we should find out if the zoning is gonna work. And I'm just curious if they did any studies of any of these intersections for the amount of impact that was gonna be happening.
Um, one side of it probably died as extensively as we should. Any others? Yeah, what should go to next, what are you?
Um, I think maybe site next.
Oh, Greg made his presentation, Dr. Revisions, does anyone have any questions or comments about the minor changes that we did based on some some of the peer review comments and comments that we got at the last meeting? Pretty much the same, other than obviously Greg is told fine that it's feasible to move that driveway and the landing area he's gonna look into as far as the grade goes.
No one usual idea, at least that when you look at it, it looks like the stairs in the wall going to the public right away. And we can't help that, that's just not acceptable. So, I I don't, how 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 do you, how do you fix that?
So, you're right, the um, the retaining wall here goes along the back end of the sidewalk and then we do have a stair, I think, for one of these entrance that goes up. Um, we can pull the stairs back a little bit closer to the building beside, that's not a problem. Uh, with the retaining wall, I'll have to look at that, you know, we can run it along the lot line at that location. You know, so you have a little grass strip in front of the retaining wall between the sidewalk and that. Uh, it's, I I saw that as part of your comments and we can, we can revise that.
And in the landscape, Frank, really needs a lot of work, it's really kind of unimaginative for what's done, you know, it's kind of a asphalt desert and we're trying to not let that happen. And the, and the other thing I'm really concerned about is the backside between you and Drew. Water over trees is not that kind of for me, sorry. Much more imaginative, healthy, bulked up landscape than you have. The water over white is probably not necessary to deal with people. So you need something that's, you know, uh, you can touch on, oh, let's take a look to check a lot of different types of trees and petruses and all kinds of landscape here, but it needs to be a little more imaginative, please.
So do you want John to present his report now and go, we'll go through?
Yes. Yes.
And because that's, it's gonna bring out a lot more site issues that I think the board needs to weigh in on tonight.
Yeah. Okay. Hi, John.
Hey, uh, John Jesse for the record, um, here review for this project. So as with many of these projects that you've been dealing with, there's a lot of discretion for the board and a lot of decisions you have to make. I'm gonna run through a few of those. First, there's requested waivers. Um, I don't know, I did a little summary sheet, I'd love to give that.
I gave the point.
Okay, so yeah, okay, that's helpful. So, um, first one is section seven fifty-one point three E to allow greater than twenty-five uh percent purchase in the front yard. I believe there's according to their plans, forty-eight point two percent confirmed, you see already requested, so the board should determine, you know, I think sooner than later, so they have some direction, whether or not that's something that the board's interested in waiving or not. Uh, associated with that somewhat is the um planting buffer. There's seven fifty-one point three H, there's supposed to be a fifteen-foot wide planting buffer along the front. Plants have five feet, they wanna waiver from that. Um, this next one, I think, is is something within the regs that's a bit of an issue because it says, uh, you have to have a ten-foot crosswalk, but most of the sidewalks aren't ten feet, so a six-foot crosswalk to a ten-foot, a six-foot sidewalk to a ten-foot crosswalk looks uh irregular something. Um, the next one, seven seventy point five G is not to require survey to extend fifty feet into the surrounding area. I think tonight's discussion prior to this, maybe you don't have to go full fifty, but clearly this is stuff you want. You wanna know where the entrance is on Old Driftway and how that area works, you wanna know in the corner on New Driftway, where the abutting property is, there is an approved plan. It would seem as though they could potentially between the combination of locating whatever's new and some comp compiling up the plan, you get the information you want, and I do think it's important to show those driveways completely on the opposite side of the road where everything relates, so everybody understands how it all lays out. Uh, I think that's stuff that you could waive a portion of it, but I think you need certain information and let them know what you would be willing not to have and what you want, I think is important. Those were listed on the cover sheet, there was one request in the response, it was not in the cover sheet, and if the board didn't catch that, it was, um, so there would be ten street trees required for the frontage. There's eight street trees proposed for the frontage. There's a request for a waiver on that, and I believe the um author is to give two trees to the DPW. There is nothing in the reg that I could find that, you know, discusses those types of things, so that's something the board also should uh give feedback on. Next ones are this requested special permits. All of those obviously require the board to agree that that's a reasonable request and that you agree with the special permit. First one is uh five eighty point four C, higher density. Um, twelve units are allowed by right based on the size of the lot, up to twenty-eight by special permit and twenty-two by request. Um, next one is to allow a building that has a street elevation of over a hundred feet in length. It's not a lot longer than that, it's a hundred and eight feet, I believe, along New Driftway based on the plans, might be a off by a few inches, but basically that's about the uh request for that. And seven fifty point eight D one, which is to allow parking that's not behind the front facade of the building. So a lot of these things need to relate, you got the buffer, the the planting buffer, you got the impervious in the, um, frontage zone there, uh, front yard, and you've got the parking closer to the right way. Those are important direction to give the applicant, if that was not gonna be, except, you know, the board doesn't want to give those leaves. Then they need to have that so they can go back and go, you know, work on their design, so, um. In addition to that, I think there's some other things that the board, um, needs to look at. If you read the definitions on the ground floor residential uses, it also talks about this residential and non-residential uses. It's not just residential, it needs to be uh determined what what's what and how that's figured out. And I think, you know, you need to look at that and see what it really means and what is allowed and not allowed. Um, the bylaw is a uh a complicated exercise I've found, and I'm sure you do as well. But there's a lot of things in there to look at, to understand, and it sometimes it's confusing. Um, you should review, obviously, relative to the density bonus, what's proposed, what uh justifies that. There's been discussion of the landscaping plan, screenings, planning. In my opinion, two of the trees at the, the street trees are too close to the sightlines, the two closest to the curb cut, I think, are too close to the sightlines. When you look, I mean, trees are gonna grow, whether they have low branches or not. Um, and I think you need to, they need to be located such that they give room to grow and room not to be in the way. Um, I know on other projects that I've reviewed, and every project's a little different, but, um, did you want a specific spot, a loading spot, this is commercial space, it's not just residential, and at seven, your driftway, they were required to have a loading space for an Amazon or UPS truck. This one would have not just that, but they would have deliveries for the businesses potentially. And that's something that would take some redesign to fit in. So that's something I think the board should look at and decide what they want. Um, and potentially associated with that, a turning analysis, which was required on some new driveways, how they come in, how they get out, what are they gonna do, where are they gonna park? I mean, we see them all the time and, uh, oftentimes they're in our way. Of course, we like the deliveries, so we obviously mind it in front of our house, but if you drive in some, in front of somebody else's, you may feel differently. Um, parking, I mean, parking requirements, I think, were inconsistently calculated for this uh gross floor area for the non-residential use based on my reading of the regulations, although it appears that they have enough spaces, I think that the numbers should be corrected. Um, let's see. You should comment on the amenity space, in my opinion, I think you need some more information on the rooftop, there's some interest, interesting discussions on what is required, it's got somewhat of a slope roof, somewhat of a flat roof, how close can you be to the edge, how do you protect it, what's the safety? What are you doing up there, where's things, you know, if it's a play area, where, where's, what's gonna, what are you gonna be playing with, is there gonna be anything coming down, is somebody walking below? Uh, I think that needs some pretty serious thought as to how it's all gonna work, and that's a pretty substantial percentage of the overall space. So the board should look at it and let the applicant know how they feel about it. In front of the building, I mean, there's a dining terrace, but there's no food service, so I don't know that that's a I mean, it'd be one thing if you had a restaurant and you had a dining terrace, but that's something else to think about. Is are people gonna go from their upstairs apartment down to sit in front, the intersection to watch parents or whatever, I don't know if that's a you know, that some of the board should have to look at, if that seems viable to them. And that includes, you know, public realm standards, look at the furnishings, things like that, look at the affordability. I think that the height of the building needs some clarity, there's different numbers on different plans, the architecture, the site plan's slightly different. Sewer and DPW issues, I think, you may need to be addressed as far as I know. Um, I know we're looking at, if they have to do some studies and things of that nature. I believe the connections are already there, they don't have to cut the roads open, is that, I think we're that's correct? And relative to the drainage, I think, um, you know, there's pretty good material there, but uh there are some issues that need to be corrected that were partially corrected. I think when you have a steep downhill slope coming into a catch base, you need to check the great capacity for stuff flowing down a gutter. Anybody that's been out in the rain, especially if you drive down First Parish Road by my house, you'll see that nothing gets in the catch base until it's raining and it's halfway across the road. So this is a much smaller area of pavement going to it, but still you may have to make sure that the grate's catching. Otherwise, the design isn't really working the way it's modeled. I think the other uh aspects, there's more data on proprietary units and little more information on uh construction phase. Soils are pretty good, if you don't have, you know, a lot of rain, it's not bad, but it is a lot of stuff in a small site and there's not a lot of room to park, there's not a lot of room for uh staging, construction, all of those things come issues. Uh, and we see that as, you know, we look around, it's complicated to build a lot on the, on these type of sites, if you don't have a place to park, you don't have a place for everybody to go, you don't have a place to stock out dirt. All of those things. That's uh pretty much it, unless you have any specific questions for me.
Um, snow removal, was that indicated?
Uh, that's part of the O and M, they need, I I don't know that they did show where snow is gonna go on this, which you do need to. That's in the storyboard already, I think it's one of my.
Uh, thank you, John. I I was gonna stop with that, I think overall the building is too big, yes, this guy, it it the infringement on the by the plan shows that the building is too big. And my real concern is that top floor, that roof is a little scary. Um, and your regulations don't match the site plan, so it's kinda hard to see, you know, what's going where. Um, in in your drawers, you say that there's a kitchen on that top floor? I don't, we don't think we agree with that.
No, we had a little kitchenette, oh, good.
Yeah, and, and, um, that whole top area looks like, like it's a huts, it looks like it's habitable, it doesn't look like it's a perple, like it looks like somebody could live there. Um, and the fourth floor, the fifth floor or whatever, just that top floor has a huge amount of safety issues. Um, I maybe we'll play pickleball up there for the child, I don't know. Um, what do you put on doing up there? And as John said, you know, I'm a city girl and I'm not gonna go to the front walkway and feed my dinner on the sidewalk, I just, um, I I don't look at that to literally imagine use, use of public space here. It it's a big building and there's a lot going in there. The top floor and the first floor have a lot of issues with living and business on the same floor, how far back it is. Um, those are my initial, and Rebecca, would you like to chime in and have anything to say or?
Um, well, I do think on that rooftop, it needs to be decided what it is.
Yeah.
I don't think you can really, you can't have anything coming down from that roof. Would you allow people to barbecue up there, or is that that, a lot of places don't allow that? Is that a safety? I'm not quite sure about the building process on that, but.
I don't think that grills were contemplated for the fifth floor.
Yeah. Did we know what is, what is?
Not really, it's just an open space recreational area for lounging, to get together, you know, being outdoors, honestly, it wasn't really
Open space. Yeah.
If if you, if you need to nail it down, to talk to the board about it, then we'll come up with some things, but
I mean. Yeah.
It's a generally open recreational space.
Yeah.
I don't think we're gonna have pickleball up there.
Okay, wanna play this ball?
I would imagine not.
You know, if you, for instance, if you're in a city and there's tables and chairs up there, people can go and dine and sip and drink their wine and have cheese and crackers and do whatever.
Yes.
Yeah.
It's a nice, I don't, sunset, it's a beautiful place to be, I don't know that you can see it from there, but maybe you can.
I think they typically have roofs up there, it's just like a roof deck.
No, it's an open roof deck, it's an.
Uh, sometimes they have little spots like that, though, and again, I'm thinking of like, uh, bigger.
If you think of the Marina Bay, I don't know, maybe this, you know, the top of the uh, the restaurant, the new apartments they put up,
Yeah.
they have lots of amenity spaces between that are outdoors with pergolas and covered spaces and plantings and
Yeah, yeah.
major boxes, so that, you know, COVID, COVID, I think, put all of us in a space where
Right.
can we get outside at home and we put these people in apartments, the big building, and the only way to get outside is to go out on the sidewalk, it becomes less private, less. But but certainly, we'll look at that and talk about it, you know, we can certainly develop a a a plan to, you know, kind of define what's allowed up there. I think that's really what we're, we're, we're not gonna be able to say specifically, this is what can be done, I think it's more like, maybe we don't allow a open flame barbecue grill up there, you know, like charcoal grill, that might even not be a good idea.
Right.
You know, allowing some tables and whatever to sit up there. And I think the same, I understand your comment about the area by the, uh, on the corner at the street level, but I, and I, and I'm with you. I I probably not my vibe, but what I see today is more and more of that, when you think of the galley, they open the doors, people are sitting nearby the sidewalk, cars are going by. And people seem to enjoy sitting there, and if you lived in the city, like I did, that that was one of the ways that you could just go outside and just sat there. And that's why I think this village sort of transportation, Home Bay District is kind of what it's meant to be, is to kind of simulate that closeness. Look across the street to a a convenience store, a coffee shop, people walk by and say hello to your neighbors.
No, excuse me, and maybe you just talked about this before, do you have any idea on what's gonna be in retail?
I don't think we have.
No idea, you're just building a space. No idea, you're just building a space, you're saying it's not.
No, no quote, honestly, just.
Well, I'd like to go back to sort of comments that were made about the waivers in that. So we've got a couple of situations, one is that the impervious is almost double, is allowed, and the planting buffers are one-third of what's sort of required. And I guess I'd like you guys to speak to why that needs to be the case.
But I think that's a great question, to help us guide us going forward, so Greg, you could perhaps talk a little bit about how we lay out the site.
The, regarding the impervious in the front yard, that's actually a question that I, I was hoping you'd get a little bit more information on, and I I haven't reached out yet to get, but there's no definition of what the front yard is, is that the space between building and the front property line, or is that from the front yard setback to the right of way line? Does it go across the entire property or just in front of the building? Looking for a little bit of definition in that. The way we calculated, I think, was across the entire property, not just in front of the building. But it was a little unclear in the bylaw, so the number may be exaggerated depending on how it's interpreted.
If, John, how did you?
Well, I used his numbers, but I believe my, my understanding of it is that it is the whole frontage. I think that's how it was done at the gas stage.
Right, when I look at that, I look at the backside of the center, side of the sewer, right?
Okay.
Like that open, like those chairs out, that, that much, I'm looking for that.
Sure. Yes.
Yes, it is. Now, if you're, if you're looking at that, Patty, I know we're kind of getting a little bit off Steve's question there. The definitions of a sidewalk dining terrace don't require a food establishment to be in the property, as opposed to the definition of a, I think it's a cafe dining terrace requires it to have a food establishment in the building, so they are clearly defined differently in the bylaw, and I think we were going to the one, obviously, that doesn't have a food establishment in there, it's just space that's available for someone to sit outside.
So Steve, going forward, you wanna talk about any of the other waivers that are requested to help guide us and?
Uh, I, well, there's the crosswalk thing, I think I agree with John, it's kind of weird that you got six and a tenth, that's probably okay.
Wait, could we answer that first?
No, we haven't got the answer to those first two, we're still at, you know, twice the size in terms of impervious, and we're still, planting buffers still five feet instead of fifteen. And, and I guess, you know, absent some some real clear explanation on why it needs to be that way, why, why not fifteen for the planting buffers, why not twenty-five for the impervious?
So, the planting buffer, we are, we're trying to accommodate parking up along the street itself in most locations. So the parking itself, you know, would get pushed back or consolidated on the site, and we lose some parking spaces along the driveway itself. Minimal five feet. Yeah, so it's.
Yeah, I think it's some just, you know, it's a lot of it's a lot of hardscape, is what we have here, and, and the waivers you're asking for is essentially affecting that. Feels like there should be more something that's not quite so, I think that's why we really have the way right, so.
It seems like we, maybe we should take the opportunity to go through the waivers ourselves, and draft a paragraph or something on a narrative on substantive reasons for the request, does that make sense?
Yeah, I'm fine, I was, I didn't know what you were trying to talk about tonight.
Sure, yeah, I, I appreciate it, John.
But, but to me, you put those two together, we lose a fair amount of, I mean, soft space, right?
Right.
So, I'd have to understand why it was important to do that.
Yeah, I, I get you. I apologize if it was suggested that we were just not, I don't feel like we're prepared to kind of give a definition on that.
That's fine, at this time.
We, we should be, but we're.
Yeah, I'm just trying to give you my sense of some of these things, right, and we can, so when we come back, address it.
Yeah, we go, so we're gonna, we'll follow up on those two for you, a little bit more of a position statement.
Yeah.
And then if we could go through the other ones, if John mentioned, I tried to write down the ones that interest me as a lawyer, then I did browse off some that didn't interest me, because they were probably engineering things.
Well, I, I think the note of having a six-foot wide sidewalk that's going to ten-foot crosswalk.
We can just move that down to six feet, is that a bit more than?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that, that seems reasonable to me, but, I mean, that's just fine on my.
So the void would be comfortable with the back way?
I, I would be. I must be.
Steve.
One yard, how do you go?
And then what's the next one, Steve?
I, I think the, the thing, well, no, the thing that John mentioned about on on the site land showing just like the entrances across the street, and you know, getting, getting more of that, if he needs that.
You definitely got it.
Yeah, we, yeah, we know.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, we, we do have the curb cuts, I can add them a little bit further back on the property.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So. Trees, I guess, what I heard was and are required in your proposing page.
Patty wants more.
I'm sorry.
Patty wants more.
I love it, and, and they don't want to be.
Can you just point out where they are?
And, 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 uh, it's my observation that they do not put a DPW what it was, the top layer places all the trees. No matter where they go, she doesn't tell you where to go.
Kind of like the site, kind of like the building.
I think they should go on site, yeah, so, so we want them on site.
Because we, we have to be conscious of global warming in each island, so I think that there has to, the two extra trees, the two trees are required, that they should be found a place on site.
Okay, we can look at it, we can do that, yeah, we'll definitely look at that. What's the next one you have, Steve?
Those were the waivers.
Those are the waivers, I think, those were all waivers, and the rest of it is special permits.
Oh, okay, okay.
A special one. I think you should go over the special one as well.
Oh, the special permit.
Yeah.
So let's go into that, I think the first one was higher density, right?
Right, twelve to twenty-two, right?
We're twenty-two units with five affordable?
Correct.
Five affordable.
Typically, you require a density bonus for anything that's, you know, you, right now, the density bonus would be for ten units. So, you need to discuss the density bonus.
So our choice is we either take cash.
Cash, works for me.
Or we go to some kind of accepted project area, you know?
Per the, exactly, per the zoning law.
Per, per the zoning law. So for ten units, I would propose seventeen-five per unit. And that would be your your density bonus, that's open to discussion, but that's, would be my one, seventeen-five per unit. Ladies, I agree. Um, what were you thinking about as a density bonus for us?
You know, I know Greg and I did talk about a public amenity project, not really a cash payment, we were talking more about like, what could we do as far as some recreational space, something like that, so.
So that's, okay, so you know it has to be already in our proof plan.
Yeah, yeah.
So, we're open to discussion to, not right now, I think we need to discuss this, design this tonight.
Yeah.
But to put that in, in a, a thought process, and, and look at the open space plan in the master plan and see what we have in the waters.
Sure.
And review the section of the bylaw that says that it has to be, you have to identify out a permit for it, et cetera, and the timing, if that's indeed what the board wants to do, and the board is not obligated to grant a density bonus.
I think the next one was building length, one oh eight. You'll do with that?
I don't have a problem with that, I don't, yeah.
All right, maybe I'm getting, are we a little ahead of ourselves in terms of these requested waivers and now special permits? You made the comment, Madam Chair, that you felt that this building was too big.
I do.
And Mr. Pritchard made the comment that he felt that the front, um, between the sidewalk and it was the impervious area was, was basically almost twice the amount, and the, and so on and so on. I am wondering, is there any possibility, are you telescoping this building down? In other words, take twelve feet off in front of it, right across the board, and push it back. And give yourself more room in the front of it, it is too big, it is just too big. Here, you're maximizing what you have there, maybe you might lose a couple of units, but the other thing is I feel very, very strongly that in this zoning district mixed use, it's commercial and business retail on the first floor in its entirety, not condos or apartments. And I cannot vote for this at all if there are condos or apartments on the first floor, you do not have my vote. Uh, everybody interprets these bylaws differently, I was involved in this mixed use type of thing, and if you look at the harbor, you don't see any residential underneath, above on, on main floors, and the same thing in what we've been doing in Green Bush. So, I, I'm telling you right now, gentlemen, you do not have my vote for this project. Number one, if you can't scale it back, number two, if you don't have commercial or, or business or whatever on the first floor, and finally, I cannot subscribe to what you're doing on the roof at all, period, end of discussion, I can't subscribe to that. I can't, I think it's, it's nice to have a patio up there, if, if you make it a little bit smaller, I would lose the fifth floor, none of it makes a whole lot of sense. I mean, we're just trying to maximize this piece of property, and as Madam Chair has said, and I fully agree with her, it is way too big. And you're trying to, to shoehorn this into this piece of property. And at this point in time, you do not have my vote, okay?
I would say, to go off of what Ann's saying, I don't know if I feel quite as strongly as she does at this point, but I'd say for me, since this project's coming in, in particular, the latest iteration, I just felt like kind of conflicted. As a member of this board and as somebody that was kind of helped get the Green Bush, um, new zoning passed, because when we did that, it was largely form-based code, and the whole intent of that was to create a look and feel for that part of town. And when I saw this project, it was kind of like, I was conflicted, because it was like, yes, you're applying under that zoning, but you're not really hitting the mark in terms of what we're going for, it's closed, but I think to what kind of Steve and Ann said, I feel like they're building just there's something about the mass and scale of it, that just is a little bit, you know, whether it's twenty-two units or not, I'm not making a judgment on that. It's just, there's, there's something with the look and feel that that's, that, and I know this is very subjective, but it doesn't really fit with the design intent that I personally had in mind when I envisioned the area, and also kind of this look beyond scale of other projects that have been coming through as well, and then on that front, also in terms of the site design and the low-impact development, you know, green, green infrastructure, whatever aspect, I think also to Steve's point, there's, there is a lot of hardscape here. It's a very austere site design, I would call it, it's not very naturalistic at all, and I think that, you know, if every project came in and we're asking for these type of waivers and this type of building or whatever, that form-based code that we created for this neighborhood would kind of go out the window, and it would not have the look and feel that I kind of thought that we were going for when, when it came through, so. It's, it's an interesting project, I like some of the ideas that are done, it's just like, it's a little bit pushing the envelope for me, and particularly, I would say, out of term of the, the waivers regarding the planting and potentially the impervious service pepping, more like a clarity in the definitions of that, I don't know if I could go for those particular waivers. As far as the roof concern is concerned, I, I'm, as far as both of the outdoor amenity spaces, I should get the front yard corner, as well as the roof, I, I could be on board with those, however, on the roof aspect, I'm not clear on the height of the structure on the roof, and I do not feel comfortable granting having structures that exceed the height requirements right now in that district for, for an outdoor amenity space, I just don't want to set that precedent right now.
Yeah, I would just peel off that particular thing, Ben, is my, my thought was, why can't this just look like sort of Widow's Walk, like space or something, you can sit up there and all that. And I know you're trying to get cover and all that, but all that does is sort of add to like, and sort of the mass of buildings to people.
Yeah, I won't.
But I, I mean, I'm okay with somebody using the roof as a roof deck, right, I mean, as, as a place to sit in the evening or whatever.
But that top structure, the stairs, it's huge, Bob?
I don't have a problem with the, with the concept, because if you look at what we're doing, going from the Rotary, we have a multi-story structure right off the Rotary. We're gonna be, like, we're looking at a, a place that's right near the ICE and EPM, right by the Deval Dance and Riverside, that's going to be right up across the street, with the gas backwards right across the street. And then this, as far as that side of the street goes, this side has like more depth to it than any of the other buildings on proposed buildings on that side of the street, or approved buildings on that side of the street, and it's, you know, it's gonna have more depth than the, the gas backwards that's already up there, so is, like, is that area of Green Bush gonna become like a gauntlet? Yeah, it is, but like, we're already looking at other places, so I don't know. I don't see how this is any different, so I don't have an issue with it, we're gonna stay consistent with what we're, we're putting in the other locations.
I think the board needs to just give them a little bit of direction, I mean, are you happy with all the, most of the amenity space needs to be on the roof? Is that something that you're happy with? I think you need to give them direction with that. Uh, I think that the roof structure, I, penthouses are not allowed now, penthouses are not allowed in situ. You can, the stairwell can extend above there, but, you know, the bathroom has to be handicap accessible, but that extended, you know, structure out there, I think it's, I think it's way too much, and I think a kitchenette in the stairwell is just way too much. But I think, I think they should, you should give them some idea of you're in support of the amenity space. Uh, the board is gonna have to decide if they want to refer them to the DRC tonight. I mean, I, I do have a meeting set up, but if you don't refer them, then they're not gonna go.
Yeah, but I, I, I would.
Yeah, I should too.
Hey, they gotta take this input into that conversation.
Okay. Conversation. But, again, I'm gonna iterate, I think what we've all said is that, that roof deck really needs more consideration, you have nothing around it, there's not even a fence up there, that's just out in the yard.
If I could just, uh, if I could take a minute just to respond to this, some of the design comments, because it could kind of affect where we go with this, but what I'm hearing, and I, as, as the representative of the design, you know, the design of the building, I'm hearing it's too, too big, that comment to me is confusing, because, you know, in, in designing a building here that's four stories, it kind of changes the nature of how we have to design the third floor, because we're trying to meet requirements on the fourth floor. So the peak of that third floor and the eve line is considerably lower than any other three-level or two-and-a-half-story building. From my perspective, that does not look like a massive building as a two-and-a-half-story structure, the fourth floor is fairly hidden. We do have a taller element here that was meant to kind of break up and kind of create a that was meant to kind of break up and kind of create a little bit more of a feature on that side of the building as you come down the, uh, you know, the, the driftway. As far as the, you know, comments about the, the, the rooftop, and I mean, I'm, I'm just gonna point out that this is our second hearing for this building. The comments that I'm hearing tonight probably would have been a lot more helpful in the last meeting, given that we came out of that first meeting feeling like we were being asked to make adjustments to this building. The comments that I'm hearing tonight are telling me that, that we're looking at a complete redesign. Um, if we're talking about pushing the facade back 12 feet from where it is now, I'm not even sure if that meets the zoning requirement, which says we have to be five to 15 feet. Okay, so that, I, I would want clarification on that, you know, tonight, if that's what we're being asked to do. Taking 12 feet, we don't have anywhere to move in the back. So taking 12 feet to me is a complete redesign. So the, the reason that I'm making these comments is that I, I don't see how we can make the adjustments that you're asking without a complete redesign. If that's, if we're saying it's too big, it needs to be 12 feet further back from the road, I, I can't, I can't necessarily make this configuration work and just make a smaller version or narrower version of this building. So I'm looking for clarification on that so that we know whether or not we're still working with this and massaging this design or if we're starting from scratch again. Because that's, that's where I'm leaning towards hearing the comments that I'm getting tonight. And the only frustration I have is that we didn't necessarily get those specific comments at the, the first hearing. Because now we're into a second, you know, revision on this where we felt that we were sort of massaging this and that the design in itself was sort of acceptable. So as far as the idea of a fourth story, you know, it's incredibly difficult to, you know, say this is something that is, you know, written into the zoning, but with a step-back requirement, the idea that we get from that is that we're, we're, we're trying to design a New England-style building that meets all of these dimensional criteria. And, you know, the result of that fourth floor is what you see here. It's, it's very hard to see it from most angles from the ground. And it kind of, you know, the intent of the zoning from my perspective is that it's intended to kind of disappear back in time. That's what we have here. So, uh, then the, the final comments on the penthouse, uh, which, or what, what I would call the, you know, access pavilion, that was something that we came out of the last meeting feeling that that was something that was not necessarily being suggested, that we had talked about, that would be entertaining as a, as a concept. We, we went ahead and did that and that, that's being done in a way that is, is unobtrusive as possible. So we have to provide an elevator stop. If we want to have access to that top level, just to be clear, we can't just give a little stairway with a hatch and allow residents of the building to go up and use the roof. They need a full elevator, two stair, eight dresses, and a toilet. And the roof of that penthouse, uh, access or that rooftop roof access has to be tall enough to accommodate that elevator, which unfortunately you need, you know, somewhere around like the top of the roof at 12 to 13 feet. We try to create that little, you know, hip roof, you know, style structure. And I, I can assure you that that won't be visible pretty much from the, any line around the, around the property on the sidewalk, I guess. You know, that, but there, there's really no other way to, to achieve access to that rooftop without providing, we wouldn't, we wouldn't necessarily have to provide the covered area outside. You could pull that roof back. But there's not anything much smaller that we could do. And the, obviously, the little kitchen can go away. That was just something we kind of threw in there because we had a little hallway there. But I think if, if we can get tonight, like you said, before we get a recommendation to go to the design board, like whether or not this concept is something that we can continue moving forward with. Because if we keep pushing so hard on it, it's, it's got to a point where it's gonna be, this is a new design, this is a fresh start, that, you know, we decided this is just too large. And again, I can't, I, I really can't understand the, the comments about the size. I think this is a very, very modestly looking building from this approach. And that's a true perspective from the actual computer model that those, all those drawings come from. Nothing being manipulated here and try to, you know, make it look like a shorter, less tall building. So this is the best that we can do within the zoning requirements that we've been providing to give a nice-looking New England-style building that meets all those requirements. And, and if, if, if it's, if, if the general response is that this is too much and it's too big, then, you know, moving forward in the future, we need additional guidelines to say, this is what you have to do. This is what you must, you know, adhere to in order, because otherwise we're kind of designing something without any real idea what the response is gonna be. So that's my general response to those fine comments.
I, I did talk to the building commissioner regarding the elevator shaft at, at the roof. And he did confirm that you can, you know, it kind of has to be almost the way they designed it, except that obviously you don't need a kitchenette in there. And the pavilion-type thing, that could just be a cantilever over the doors so that you would have some, um, cover in the event that you're out there playing and all of a sudden, you know, it started raining, you could go under the cantilever. But that, this, this pavilion part was just a little bit too big. I mean, you, you do have zoning setbacks for the building. I think that this building is not, is, is towards the front of the setback. Maybe you're really suggesting that it go to more the, the further part of the setback.
One comment on the, on the roof. And so I know not everybody like barbecues or cooks outdoors or whatever, but if, like, if you're not gonna do, if you're not gonna have a designated, like, area outside on the ground level that one of the X number of people that live there, like, will, will then put a barbecue, you're going to either have to have it on the roof or on the balconies. Because, and I think that the roof, because the patio is, it's a little bit, uh, uh, shaded from, sort of sheltered from the street, so you can't see it. That would be the best place to do it. Because unless you're gonna have like a security monitor building or, you know, somebody walking up and, you know, giving you like, uh, telling you to remove your barbecue, then barbecues are gonna start showing up. So they can either show up on the patios or on the, on the roof. And it might not be everybody, but it will be at least one or two. And that's the reason why I brought the comment earlier about just even, you know, some kind of like either concrete pad or like fire retardant, you know, building stuff up there. Because maybe if you live in the city, even like in Southie, every single fire in Southie is a roof fire because somebody puts up a charcoal grill. And charcoal grill is probably not a great idea, but someone is going to put a grill somewhere. So it's either gonna be in the parking lot, on the, on the, on the balconies or on the roof. Or I'd say probably the roof is the best place, you know, best place to go. Which then adds in maybe not like a full kitchenette, but really like to draw the people into one area. Like, hey, if you're gonna be doing outdoor cooking, then we're gonna make it easy for you to do it here. And this is where you do it. All right, just a thought.
I think a lot of the condominiums, even the newer ones in Boston, have that type of con, um, concept of on a roof.
Yeah.
Especially, I think I know people that just bought and, um, take help and they have that. They have a, there's a lot of, as they say, you know, smaller condos and then bigger shared spaces. That's something I'm interested in, but a lot of people aren't interested in that. So I think that gives those people is to go. And of course, the roof deck would have to have, um, railings and all that. They couldn't, they couldn't build it. It's like, I don't have a problem with a roof deck either.
I think what you're asking us is, is, are we, are we able to go forward with this design? So I think what you hear from us, it's, it's a little, it's a little industrial on the front. You need to soften that up. And we, we, we can live with that. You can soften that up a little bit. The, the roof deck itself, I think the structure on the roof is too big. So if you could find a way to make that a little smaller, not so substantial, I, I think that we could, we could live with that. I, I think that, as Mr. Pritchard points out, it is, we need more trees, we need a lot of native species down there. We need to just soften that up. Um, we are closing the also later, I heard that today. So I think that's good news for us. Um, if, if we refer this to a design review, you can take those comments if you're watching design review. And I agree, you could be points of design review, right?
Yes.
Yeah, really dedicated. And you're all working with architects and they give really good ideas and something cool. Thank you. Yes, yeah.
Just a point of clarification. On the fourth level, you have the rooftop and then amenities space. And then you have the other amenities space. How are these related to one another? Is one on top of the other? Is, is there a, I don't fully understand. This is the fourth floor. This is the fifth floor, the roof deck. But how does this, this is on top of this, I take it?
They're separate.
They're separate. But so this is on top of this.
Didn't he have a picture there? Stepped back.
It's stepped back, okay.
It's kind of almost terraced.
It's, uh, it's terraced. That was not said. It's terraced. And so you're, if you were to do this, there has to be some type of a steep point to develop. Widow's Walk, something that makes sure that someone doesn't dive over the edge of it.
Well, they're, they're all sunk into the, there are these sort of like hip roof forms that come around. And then you have to have a guardrail, which is three foot six height for anything that's up that high. Um, oftentimes we even go a little bit higher than that one to, you know, and they're all, there are, there, there wouldn't be any areas of those rooftop, um, you know, decks that, that directly had a straight, you know, fall down to the, you know, there would be places to kind of bounce down. No, I'm just saying. They're all, they're all sunk down against you and that's, that's kind of reading to the, to the requirements.
Now, could somebody from the upper deck, the upper terrace be able to get, propel down to the next level?
I mean, no easier than getting off of a balcony on a second floor of the ground.
He said, what would you, what would you do?
Oh, and other than there are some stairs.
The, the, the stairs that access the fourth floor, um, is the e, the, the egress stair that's on the driftway side. And then the stair that accesses the fifth, the top level is the other egress. And then there's an additional, because they need two, um, egresses from that top. So unfortunately, yeah, there's, there's a stair, there is an outside stair that comes down from that top level that, um, could probably be chained off realistically, but, um, I believe it does have to be there.
And a rope ladder.
Code compliant.
Do you have any comment? And it's true to, uh, you guys are then on the first floor. The Drew Project, four of those buildings, four of the largest buildings are 100% industrial on the first floor. And also the massing of the new buildings directly next door, tower, tower over this project. And I don't think they have anywhere near, this is my personal opinion, the architect of design, the Jamie's put into this building. Thank you.
Hey, I did have a question about your comment to Jamie about the front being, I think you say too commercial-looking or too industrial. So are you referring to the horizontal facade or to the skate landscaping?
The landscaping, I think. The horizontal, I, 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 yeah, I, 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 I'm trying, like, you stand up, would walk.
Yeah, no, I, I thought that's what you meant, but I was, yeah, I, I agree with you that the, the front facade wouldn't be deep commercial. You know, industrial, it looks very resonant.
Yeah, look, yeah.
Okay, just so he knows.
Yes, Karen. Um, so do we have any public comment? We just have to kind of move it along. Yes?
Absolutely. Um, John, hopefully I'm speaking, you know, to someone that's gonna help you. You got a great theme up front. Personally, I think the building is gorgeous compared to what's down there in the driftway area. But if they don't have a direction on the waivers, you chase them to hell. Because there's no reason to go to design review. Don't even look at the building itself. Figure out if the site is gonna work. And it's gonna be on Greg Morse to determine how much area he's gonna be able to use for a building after he makes the site work. So you've got to give him some direction as to whether you will waive some of the impervious area so that John doesn't have to go through this three or four times. I mean, Steve, you, you mentioned he's looking for double. Is there something that the board would give for a waiver so that they could design a footprint for this building and then work up? Otherwise, you can provide a beautiful building, but if it doesn't work with the site, these guys are just gonna go in circles and circles. So they do need a sense of direction on what you may grant for waivers for them to design the site properly. And then who are going to answer?
From the perspective of impervious surface, I, I don't know why we can't hit 25%, hit 15%. Nobody's explained that, but they've only said this is what we want, right? And, and I'm, I'm saying that's, that's a lot. That's a big jump from what the standard is. So why can't we make the standard work?
Yeah, and I really thought they should, can they go with a, a 10% increase over that or a 15% increase? Is that something that's palatable to the board or are you gonna hold them to the 25? If you hold them to the 25, the building's gone. If, if that's something the board's gonna do.
Nobody's explained that to me, right? That's, that's what I asked. That was the question I asked, okay? So I don't know the answer to that. All, all I know is the standard is 25%. We're looking to double that, right? And we're looking to take only one-third of the total available plantings offered. Use one-third of what's required, right? So, so I guess the, you know, I don't know the answer to that. That's why I'm asking the question.
So until you can answer that, I would suggest that you have to change.
You know, if, if it's within, you know, a, a reasonable band, and I don't even know what that looks like, right? Uh, it's worth discussing, but, uh, I don't, I don't know the answer to your question. That's the problem.
But I think you gotta start there.
Well, that's what I'm saying. Why not start with the standard, right? Why is the standard not attainable?
So, but I think, unless you can answer Steve's question, my question, I think we need to have a continuance on this. Until we can answer, those are two big things. That's doubling the, the, uh, impervious space. And that's, again, that industrial, that hardscape, which we don't want to see down here. So, um.
Can I ask you a question about, this is, I don't know, because that is due to Drew Project. What is the buffer on the Drew Project? Would that allow to be, would that require to be to 15 feet? When you remember, does that reduce the budget? Because we're gonna have another buffer on our property line to the Drew Project. That's, that's, we have both. I'm just curious. That might be the reason why the five would work because they've got 10, we've got five. Now, if someone do have a 15-foot buffer between, are you expecting a 30-foot buffer between two projects, like 50 on each side? That would be huge. But my point is, you know what I mean?
I guess I'm, I'm just saying, this was the standard.
Sure, that's what I said.
And somebody made some decisions to say, we're not gonna use the standard. And I don't have any rationale for that other than, so if you ask me what we think we should have, what we should have standard, if you say there's a reason, there's a, a set of reasons why that standard, maybe that standard's, you know, I could have 30% impervious instead of 25, right? But not 50, right? And why do we need to go into a five-foot buffer instead of a 15-foot buffer? I, I hear what you're saying. I'm just saying.
Yeah, that might be the reason.
Nobody's really explained any of that, right?
Yeah, we didn't.
So we have a kind of a full agenda. We've kind of gone over our things. So I'm gonna request that we have a continuance on this.
All right, so we, right now you're gonna refer them to DRC. And so that's gonna be on January 24th. So we were, we have available March 23rd, when they would need to submit by February 50th.
So, gentlemen?
That, that sounds fine to me.
And we come, we each have a real answer to those two questions about the impervious, you know, above. And we come, we each have a real answer to those two questions about the impervious, you know, above the water.
Yep.
That, that's a hard stop for us.
And it's a hard stop for me on the first floor.
We will, we will address that as well.
Thank you.
To the best of our ability under that kind of design, we'll, we'll see what we can do.
I would like to accept the applicant's request to continue the public hearing for Site Plan Administrator Review and Special Permit for Missus Building and Strongwater Permit in the Village Center and Neighborhood District, Brangish Gateway District, New Driftway Transit Village, Sub-District VCN, GDEG, MDTV until March 23rd, 2023, at 6:30 PM, and to continue the time for action for filing with the Town Court until May 26th, 2023.
Second.
I want a favor.
Aye.
Thank you everyone.
Thank you very much. So moving, moving right over on the half hour tonight's schedule. Now, we can keep coming here, or one per the central field, Mr. Go back over here. On you tonight, thank you.
Ah, wonderful, how is, are you?
All right, well, tell us which are the jobs.
Um, so, oh, what did I say?
Oops. Yeah, we got this way, please, this way.
So I think, um, as of the, the last year, on December 8th, um, the plan has largely remained unchanged. Based on a few of the comments from the public, specifically in regards to irrigation. Did prepare the good documents, include water sense controllers, water sensor by controllers and, and a rate gauge. So, uh, we did our best to comply, uh, with the comments from Water Resources Commission. We, uh, still have about to bid for base bed being the baseball field, 90 foot baseball field located on the seventh portion site. Alternative number one, mission of softball field along Grant Street. Alternative number two is for the protected netting and associated chain link fence along Central Park Drive. And then alternative number three is for the two scoreboards. Other than that, um, you know, it's.
So based on, we, we have peer review and less comments, our peer review engineer is online, he answers, Karen.
Well, so where we left off the hearing last time is that the peer review had been satisfied. We just did not have a draft decision. We got a comment in, uh, Tuesday night at 8 o'clock, um, from Greg Morse, uh, an engineer. And our peer review engineer, Janet Bernardo, is here to address those comments. The con, it's, it's in your folders, everyone has received the comment in your folder. It's an email. It's an email.
And I apologize if we are no longer involved, sir, my civil engineer would be, she's, she's.
Bernardo, thank you for joining us.
Good evening, how are you? Can you hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
Um, and just for the record, uh, my name is Janet Bernardo. I'm a professional engineer with the Horsey Witten Group. And we conducted, uh, the peer review for this project and our last letter. We were satisfied with the stormwater design. I spoke with Karen yesterday regarding the email from Greg Morse. And many, I'm, I'm really here if the board has any comments, questions that you want clarified from this email. Some of the comments that he has listed here were comments that we previously noted and the applicant has previously addressed. Um, and one of the comments was whether the soil evaluator evaluation was performed by an engineer. And, um, the applicant has confirmed that the engineer did conduct that soil evaluation. And, um, it is our standard practice that if a professional, uh, soil evaluator, a competent soil evaluator conducts a test pit, we hear that, we look at it and we accept it. It looks like, um, there was some explanations about the test pit that were done. And we found those to be reasonable and, and accepted the values listed and provided in the calculations. So there are a number of, um, there's 14 comments. If there's anything specific, I mean, to go through them individually, you know, I could do that if you'd like, but, um, it's, it's your choice.
Karen?
It's up to the board.
Well, I, I guess I have, just a general comment, I, I, positive, I just, just now picked this up. And it seems like there's a lot of detailed questions. And Jen, I guess we will, I, I will defer to you that you've waded through these and you've got answers to all of them that, that are satisfactory at this point?
Yes, I, I, and, you know, I'm happy to go through them if there's anything specific. But, um, I, nothing jumped out at me as something that we hadn't thought through and either previously commented on and the applicant responded to or, um, found the applicant's design to be acceptable. For instance, the, as you get the test pit results, they used a more conservative value than maybe they needed to use. So if somebody's more conservative, uh, we don't usually recommend that they use something that's less conservative. So, you know, we just say, great, it's conservative. There's a elevation that's shown on a cross section that shows the top of the hill, the top of the basin. Um, it is, it's really showing the top of the elevation closest to the, to the, um, field. And then there's the bottom of the basin and then the actual highest point or lower, lowest high point is marked. So there's two points is like, because it has steeper on one side and it goes up higher to the basin, to the field compared to like clear the street. So there's two elevations and that was like one of the questions that were out there. There's two existing catch basins that are being reused, they're being, um, adjusted, they're being adjusted slightly. We asked if they were deep some catch basins and we were told that they were in fact deep some catch basins. Then those catch basins discharged to the municipal system. They do not discharge to a well under a resource area. That was, um, another comment that we had made. One of the questions that we had actually brought up of the, so the number 14 is they're taking credit for street sweeping even though there's no streets in the, um, in the area that's being draining to the basin. And I did talk to the engineer about this, um, a while ago. And because the impervious cover is actually walkways and not roadways, it was, it was her thought that to kind of bring the walkways to the similar level as a roadway. Road, you know, we worry about the suspended solids coming off of roads because of the cars and the sediment and the oils and the cars. But when it's a walkway, you still need to have some, um, treatment, but you don't need as much. And so you kind of took the credit for the street sweeping to bring the walkway to the same place as a swept road. So it was an interesting way to do it, but I was like, yeah, that seems fair. We, we discussed it and it made sense to me. So those are, you know, kind of, you know, the, there was a, time of concentration flow path that we asked them to put on and they did. And that was one of the questions, are they there? And yes, and frequently there's a direct entry of six minutes for smaller areas. We accept that, six minutes is a standard. So, uh, like, you know, there's so many different comments, it's, but we did kind of go through them all. And I feel comfortable that, that the design is appropriate. It's an existing infiltration basin that they are reusing and it is, um, has been functioning. Nobody has had any concerns with this basin over the time and it will continue to function in a, in a very similar manner.
Could you, could you just, I'm not sure I understand the nuance of item two, so could you sort of address that?
Item two?
Yeah.
So, um, in the, in, we originally asked the applicant to do a test pit. They went in, we asked them to do a test pit in the footprint of the existing, um, basin. They did that test pit and it showed some modeling at 29 inches. Modeling frequently indicates, um, that might be where groundwater is because as groundwater comes up, it kind of leaves a rusty color. But the applicant, um, had done in the, in the soil evaluator, had added a comment because of, um, the depth, like, she added a comment in the soil evaluation about this 29 inches and why she did not believe that that modeling actually indicated groundwater, that it was a small perched area because it is an infiltration basin with water going into it all the time. So it was her feeling that it was not actually groundwater. And I accepted her evaluation of that.
So meaning that there was, there was some other determination of the groundwater level?
Well, she went deeper and didn't see, the modeling wasn't all the way through. It was just at this one little level. And so when she, when she dug the hole, you know, the, the hole was deep, there wasn't, there was a photo in the, um, in their report that kind of showed the modeling and that was just one little section, but it didn't ripple all the way down. Usually when you see the soil, the ground modeling, you see it all the way through, it's very obvious.
So the test pit was deep enough that you didn't even effectively reach a groundwater level?
She went deep and, she went deeper. I don't know if she decided, I, I forget now if she showed an actual elevation for groundwater at the bottom. But, but she looked at that 29 inches and felt like that was not actually indicating the groundwater of that location.
Okay, so, so your conclusion was that, uh, because this was sort of a false positive, that?
It was like a perched water table, like there was a section, um, that kind of held it there for a little while, which allowed it to, that happens from the soil type. And so, um, that was her analogy. And so when she went deeper down, it was not evident. And so she took the soil, it might have been the bottom of the hole became the seasonal high groundwater elevation because you.
Right, which gave us the separation became, okay.
Maybe the separation you needed.
Thank you. I mean, if, if she looked at the, at the comments and addressed them. Yes, there, there is a comment on, um, emergency overflow, which does seem like there should be emergency overflow.
Yeah, no, that, that is, um, something to think about for a minute. The, the project, the infiltration basin as it stands does not have an emergency overflow. There are two existing catch basins within the bottom of the system. And to create the emergency overflow, they would have to kind of excavate a, like a swell or a ditch to go to the street. Which could be done, I think, from the, but the contours are kind of funny in that area and it would, and, and so we're looking at it. The 100 year storm elevation, um, as, as noted in one of the other comments, does come close to the top of the basin, doesn't come all the way to the top. But those two catch basins will be acting constantly as overflows. And, and there's two of them, there's, people, there's only one. And the idea of having a, a foot of freeboard, which is one of the other comments, is the freeboard is over the, um, the recharge volume, not, not compared to the 100 year flood elevation. So that was one of the other concerns. It's like, you don't take the 100 year and then go another foot. You take the recharge volume and have a foot of freeboard over that, which they do have. And the 10 year, the 100 year, the 25 year may be higher than the, that recharge volume number. Uh, well, is always higher than it is. The over, the emergency overflow, um, I don't know if, um, the applicant can give a thought of how they could create that. But it would require some type of grading, something that would be a ditch swell-ish like image going towards the street to get to the catch basin, it's kind of a distance. It's not that far of a distance, but, but there are two catch basins and it has not failed as it's been existing for however long that infiltration basin has been there. And people were saying that it was always full of water. If people were saying that that's full of water on a regular basis, I would have more of a concern. But nobody has made any comment that, that this is, basin has been a problem over the years.
Karen? So I don't have any comments, I mean, for the public.
Go first. Greg Morse, 167, Tag Factory. This is an awesome project, I'm in full support, developing baseball fields at this location, my son, this is really, this, this is great. I was a little surprised at some of the design features on this compared to standards that are applied to other projects in town. In looking at, first off the bat, I'm a licensed soil evaluator, I have been for over 15 years. I've probably dug over a thousand testments in the town of Citroen. This ward in the town of Citroen have always required modeling to be considered estimated seasonal high groundwater. That's what the DEP handbook says that you're supposed to use. That was found at 29 inches deep at this site. One test pit was performed. It wasn't within the confines of the detention basin. There was a question about the groundwater table in that test pit, why didn't they dig a second one to confirm what they were thinking? They only dug one. The person that did it, we don't know if they're a soil evaluator licensed with the DEP or not. I recognize that they're a PE, but they're not listed on the DEP Soil Valuator website. So the modeling and test pit really kind of irked me. And I was surprised to see that that was accepted. Looking at the drainage calculations, yes, the overflow for this detention basin or infiltration basin, or two catch basins, you don't know that those were designed to handle the 100 year storm event. Where do they discharge to? And is the piping that that's connected to designed for the 100 year storm event? That hasn't been analyzed. There's no emergency overflow. You have required an emergency overflow in every system I have ever seen you approve. Treatment of the walkways, there's no pretreatment prior to the infiltration basin. I can assure you that would not be accepted on any of the other projects I have been involved in. The 100 year storm event, when this basin fills up with water, there's two inches from that water surface to the top of the detention basin. That's not enough of a safety factor. You've never allowed that before, the DEP standard is that there'll be 12 inches. And while I'm in, I'm in full support, I think you're setting a dangerous precedent if you approve these. Certainly, the modeling would be my biggest concern. I have dug on adjacent properties here, groundwater in this area is only down approximately two to three feet. Groundwater in this area is only down approximately two to three feet. The soil is tight. You will have issues with this, similar to what you've had at Curtis Farm with that detention basin. The modeling dictates with the groundwater tables, this doesn't comply with the mounding analysis. This doesn't comply with the two-foot separation from the basin to the groundwater table.
I just want to say that I support all of our consulting engineers on every project. Data professionals, we hire them for their expertise. And I support our professional engineers' judgment.
We can't allow your comments, that's why we have our peer review engineer. I want to believe the person that we hired, I'm just getting to have questions. On every project we all do. Do you have something to say? Yes?
Oh, and to, to be fair, I do think that the board in many towns require multiple test pits conducted. When a second test pit hasn't been done immediately, frequently, a board may condition that to be done during construction and confirmed that there is ample separation. And if they don't have it, then they will need to come back and show you the redesign. So that is an option for the board to consider.
Thank you. Take that into consideration.
Again, Steve B. Orkman. I do a lot of these stormwater permits in town. We did one on Country Way for Paul Sharon's project. And that was reviewed by the town's, one of the town's consultants. I think we ended up doing at least 17 test holes on that site to confirm all of the groundwater issues that we had out there. This project with one test hole, the engineer says that the modeling is not the groundwater. Does that mean that this board will accept that if my engineer comes in and says that my groundwater is not at the modeling? It's actually five feet lower? I would assume that the board would accept that from a private developer as much as if this is a town project. And I'm going to support the project too. I think the town owns of all fields. That's great. But obviously, you guys all know it, I believe in equal treatment under the laws here. And what I see here, if I can have two inches of freeboard on my detention basins instead of a foot, and it doesn't meet the D E P requirement, I'm happy with that. I think it's great. I hope that this woman reviews all of my projects that come in. And I hope I'm held to the same standard as this particular project. And my question for the board is, will you accept a single test pit for a detention basin on a stormwater site? That would be question number one. Will this board accept two inches of freeboards on a detention basin? Will this board accept no emergency overflow? Because you could save me a lot of money if we can do that. So I just want to be treated the same on my projects that I come in and represent as the town is doing with their own project. And that's a question for the board. Will you accept all of those things on the projects that I bring in? It must be okay, because the consultant says these things are okay. And as Karen said, a consultant is the professional. So if she agrees that all of these are okay, this board has to change the way they're thinking. And that was what this consultant says. All those things are fine. Karen just said it.
I have never peer reviewed consultants on every job. And I support each one individually for the job that they're on. You're trying to create a standard and you're trying to say that the town is held to a different standard. And I don't think that's the subject of this stormwater permit here tonight.
I'm talking in general, okay? And I can tell you, again, this is another town project, okay? This is another project that another review agent did not get because the town will never hire that gentleman to review a town project. I'd ask this board flat out why they don't use that guy to do it. He would never let this stuff fly. You all know it, okay? And I know it. There's nothing being hidden here, except it is absolutely a different standard on this project.
We get it, Mr. York, we get it. I'm just here behind my peer review engineer and any other peer review engineer that we hire. We are going to steer behind what they have to say. We understand that you disagree with what we're saying here tonight. We have not set a precedent. We know that we need this ball field. Everybody knows how I feel about this ball field, which is, I'm in favor of it, but that's okay. I'm wondering if that's wonderful. I, I think that we've probably exhausted this as far as we can. We're going to be, we'll be to death.
Well, I do think there's a point to be made here. Yeah. There is, this is awful. That we should make sure we, we have all the specific factors. I mean, and, I mean, if there's a concern about the actual groundwater level, then I, I don't object to have any condition to have another test pit. Probably, I think that makes sense. I think what I heard from Janet was this two inches of freeboard is not really the two inches of freeboard we were talking about. But maybe I misunderstood that.
No, the, their requirement is one foot of freeboard over the recharge volume elevation. And the recharge elevation for this particular project is, is below 100.82. And the top of the basin's at 101.8. So there's a foot of freeboard over the recharge volume. There is not a foot of freeboard over the 100-year storm. The image in the D E P image in the infiltration basin in Stormwater Handbook in Volume Two, Chapter Two illustrates the cross-section and a foot of freeboard that's required over the recharge volume.
So, so we're, we're saying that's not really a standard that is a foot over the 100-year storm?
A foot over the 100-year is not a requirement per mass D E P.
And the, the, so where, where would this, is this going to end up with, within two inches? With the 100-year storm?
The 100-year storm, if the basin fills up to the 100-year storm, it is within two inches of the top of the rim. Yes.
So that would, I'm thinking that would suggest that we, we do need an emergency overflow.
It, it's, emergency overflows are always nice. Yes, I agree with that. That, I think when you can do them, it's really helpful. I'm not sure exactly how the applicant will make that happen on this project.
Not sure what?
How he's going to be able to design that for this project. Because of where, how the basin sits. Because of how the basin sits in the, in relationship to the street. But he might be able to do it.
Yeah, I, I personally do not want to set any precedence here. And I think we should be addressing issues if there, so particularly this, this modeling issue. We need another test pit, we need another test pit, right? So we should do that.
Yeah, so we'll condition that.
And if, if that results in a- I'm sorry?
We'll, sorry, maybe there are, we can condition that and that'll be, you know, we'll have the contractor do that at the start of construction. And we'll submit to care.
Yeah, and if it, if it sort of proves that, that the groundwater is where it is, you're going to have to actually sort of stop redesign, right? So. I don't know, how's everybody else doing this?
I'm fine. I mean, we're not going to please everybody all of the time. We're all entitled to our own opinions. I don't think, we have dual engineers here.
Yep.
And it's unfortunate, and it's truly unfortunate that this came in at eight o'clock on Tuesday night. Which in one sense-
It's too late.
It's a little late. So, that said, could we possibly, Madam Chair, move on?
Yes, we can.
Do you want me to read this?
Me too.
Ah, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Morris, for the comments. We appreciate it. You too. Based on the information submitted by the applicant, reviewed by the board, and consulting engineer, and the testimony presented at the public hearing, I move to approve the stormwater permit for Central Field with the following conditions. One, construction shall comply with the stormwater permit application plan dated November 2, 2022, with revisions through peer review comments dated December 1, 2022, and stormwater report dated October 28, 2022. By Megan-
Vaziri.
Thank you. P E of Atticus, and the operation and management plan for Citroen JV Baseball Field latest revision, except as they may be modified to conform to the conditions below. Site work and installation of utilities, site amenities, and/or walkways shall be advised of this approval and these conditions. A copy of the approved plan and conditions shall be kept on the site at all times during construction. Two, any plan changes or changes from the proposed materials shall be submitted to the planning office to determine if the changes are insignificant or require a further notification approved by the town planner. The stormwater management system, including the detention basin and swales, grading, pardon, drainage, drainage and field components shall not be changed or expanded without the prior written approval of the issuing authority. Expansion includes additional pavement areas. Failure to obtain written approval is a violation of the Town of Citroen General Law and is subject to fines. Three, copies of this approval and the approved stormwater permit plan and conditions shall be provided to all owners who shall be advised of the need for periodic maintenance of the stormwater system and the need to retain the grading of the lot as approved. Prior any transfer of the property, the owner shall provide to the subsequent owner and the planning office an inspection report certified by a professional engineer showing compliance with the operation and maintenance plan. The planning office must receive written notification at least one week prior to any change in the ownership of the property occurring during construction. Four, where this stormwater permit requires approval, permitting or licensing from any local state or federal agency, such permitting or licensing is deemed a condition of this stormwater permit, all necessary permits and approvals must be received prior to commencement of construction. Five, the SWIP must be submitted to the planning office two weeks prior to construction commencing. The SWIP must be found in compliance with the stormwater permit. The activated need to permit shall be provided with the SWIP. All operators are to be advised that the SWIP and stormwater permits must be adhered to during construction.
Do you want somebody else to-
No, just keep, I'll keep going. Six, the applicant shall consent to allow members and town officials from planning, from the planning board and other persons acting under the planning board or its agents to enter upon any lands and carry over such inspections as may be deemed necessary. The applicant shall collaborate with the planning board and town officials and assist them in their effort to verify the layout, design, and construction work for the stormwater permit are satisfied and conform to town specifications and requirements of the board. Seven, this stormwater permit must be recorded in the registry of deeds with proof furnished to the planning office prior to construction. Failure to record the stormwater permit is a violation of the permit and subject to fines included in the Town of Citroen General Law. Eight, the detention basin shall be installed to have bottom elevation a minimum of two feet above seasonal high groundwater elevations. Stormwater during construction as well as after construction is not allowed to increase in rate or value to adjacent properties, the street or off-site. Now, no clearing beyond a limit of work of clearing erosion control line is, as shown on the plan, is allowed. The limit of clearing shall be staked in the field prior to construction commencing and shall be maintained throughout the construction phase. Snow fencing shall be placed around the majority of the site to clearly delineate the limit of work. Ten, construction work shall not begin prior to 7:00 a.m. on weekdays and 8:00 a.m. on Saturdays and shall cease no later than 7:00 p.m. or sunset, whichever is earlier. No construction shall take place on Sundays or legal, state, and/or federal holidays. Construction work includes any operation of machinery and either in the vehicles. No truck eiling on the site or on adjacent streets is allowed. Eleven, a standalone copy of the signed and soon copy of operation maintenance plan must be provided to the planning office for inclusion with the stormwater permit to be filed in the registry of deeds. Twelve, the detention basin must be retained and maintained as designed as it is a component of the stormwater management system. Maintenance must be thoroughly approved for operation and maintenance plan and is required in perpetuity. Thirteen, a stainless, stainless construction entrance shall be installed prior to any work on the site and shall be maintained throughout construction to prevent dirt tracking onto the road. Fourteen, prior to any land disturbance, erosion control shall be installed and inspected by the town planner or project agent. At this time, the site shall also be staged to show the fields and, show the fields and drainage improvements. All stockpiles shall be surrounded by an erosion, erosion control barrier. Additional erosion controls such as silt fence, silt sock, and/or hay bales placed prior to a precipitation event may be needed to prevent sediment from reaching the road or adjacent properties during construction. All erosion controls shall be installed per the plan and shall be maintained in good working condition throughout construction. The applicant is responsible for maintaining and managing stormwater on-site throughout the construction period and during the transition to fully functioning operations and maintenance. Construction approval in no way relieves the applicant from his obligation to ensure stormwater does not impact the building properties. And the applicant shall take all necessary steps to prevent such occurrences. Fifteen, the town planner shall be notified when installation of the construction entrance and erosion control are complete. If any permit inspection is being requested, this notification shall occur 48 hours in advance of inspection. Sixteen, no on-street parking, unloading, or unloading of construction equipment or vehicles shall be permitted during construction unless a police detail is provided, informed of it, as determined by the police department. Noise mitigation and proper dust controls shall be used. Seventeen, all disturbed areas associated with the stormwater permit shall be loomed and seeded with six inches of mown. Eighteen, no staging of stockpileings allowed within the detention basin. Nineteen, a pre-construction conference will be required on-site to verify the contractor is aware of the stormwater permit conditions and required inspections. Attendees to the pre-construction conference shall include design engineer, owner, contractor, town planner, and any of the town officials deemed necessary. Recording of the permit must occur prior to the pre-construction conference of recording first to the planning office. Twenty, construction inspections will be provided as follows. A, all inspections for the town shall be performed by the town planner or a designated representative of the planning department or planning board and the record design engineer. And by the record design engineer. All inspections shall be documented with written reports that describe compliance with the approved plans and supporting application documents and construction specifications. Any variations shall be noted. Be it the town planner and record design engineering, or must be notified 40 hours prior to one installation of the construction entrance and erosion control and staking records of fields, limited work, and the drainage improvements. Two, body of the detention basin. Three, installation of detention basin in swales. Four, rough grading of site including both fields to verify grades are as designed. Five, finished grading of the detention basin including the inlet and outlet elevations with the elevation submitted to the town planner and design engineer for verification. Six, inspection of site and site amenities, including loam and seed or sod of areas. Seven, inspection of final completion of site work, including cleanup, to determine compliance with the conditions. Prior to the certificate of completion, C O C, all landscaping must be installed and grass growing. Work shall be subject to removal if necessary inspections are not requested. If the property is sold prior to completion of the work, the planning board reserves- If the property is sold prior to completion of the work, the planning board will serve the right to inform the buyer that the stormwater management system is incomplete. Slough grades shall be performed during rough grading and finished grading to ensure any squalls will drain and no standing water will be present. Twenty-one, property owner shall be responsible for the property maintenance and operation of the stormwater control system. A best management practices inspection schedule and maintenance checklist and plans attached and shall serve as a guide for the proper maintenance of the system which is required in perpetuity. Twenty-two, construction of the proposed stormwater management system, site utilities, site amenities, and grading shall be supervised by a registered professional engineer who shall certify to the planning board that the site was constructed according to the approved plans. The certification shall be accompanied by an as-built plan standby registered surveyor and a registered professional engineer who designed the system and shall be submitted to the planning office within 10 days of completion of the work. This plan shall include the construction conditions of the stormwater management system, including top and bottom elevations and inverts, slough grades as necessary, grading, site amenities, and blocks. Prior to application for a certificate of occupancy, an interim as-built must be submitted to the planning office for verification that the stormwater management system and grading is following the design. The final as-built plan must be submitted prior to obtaining a certificate of completion for the stormwater permit. All work must be found in compliance with the approved permit. All grading and landscaping must be complete prior to final as-built submission. Twenty-three, if the drainage system is not performing as designed and conditioned or stormwater is observed going to abutting properties or the street, the stormwater authority can request necessary mitigation to remedy the situation. This includes the bio-retention basin. All plants must be glooming at all times in perpetuity. Twenty-four, new underground irrigation systems are prohibited from connecting to the town's water distribution center system or in any manner using municipal water. All new irrigation systems installed must be supplied by on-site sources at the expense of the property owner. Violation of this policy shall be self-inflicted by the property owner with an equal fine level levied on the installer of the system.
Do you have your additional?
Yeah, I have, um, condition twenty-two. Take out prior to application for a certificate of occupancy, take out that sentence. And then a condition, I'm gonna call it seven A. A second test pit performed by a licensed soil evaluator and witnessed by the town's consulting engineer shall be conducted at the beginning of construction to confirm the groundwater elevation in the detention basin. If results vary, design corrections will be necessary.
Is there a second as amended?
Second.
I've got, I've got a few things for the editorial in fourteen seconds. That time.
But anyone? Sorry.
Instead of at this time, she's at that time.
Okay.
And then I would suggest that the item twenty B, that the first item be application in forty-eight hours prior to conducting the second test pit. It does, it could be done before construction starts. I think, urge you to do so.
So you want, you want it to be?
I would just add, you know, you could call it at the end or at the, at the beginning, but I would say little I should be, you know, conducting a second test pit excavation per section, whatever you call it, twenty-two. Then on twenty three, I'm just clarify that a little bit. I think what you said, if the drainage system is not performing as designed as is conditioned herein, right? Or the stormwater is observed going to the property, so I would modify it that way.
Okay.
I would also, this is a question probably, but I'm assuming there's a water meter here?
So what was you?
A water meter on the system?
I don't know.
Don't know?
I guess what I could suggest is that we have a water meter and somebody report on the usage, because we've got a lot of questions about the usage. And I think at least, or, you know, at least the first year, we should have water usage.
Involving.
So a water meter shall be installed?
Well, I'm assuming there is one, but I don't know that for a fact. So I, I would say that it's, if, if a water meter does not exist, it shall be installed and the applicant shall report on usage on an annual basis.
To whom? To you.
Yeah.
Like you don't have enough to do care?
The planning board.
I'd like to see what the act.
Yeah, especially when he's talking about.
He was saying, file industry, whatever, your own laws.
It makes sense.
Yes, yeah.
We send it to be driven, not to send it to care.
Okay.
You see me?
The engine needs water now.
Yes. The people who are trying to find it for the long-term use for the town.
Mutual water, not mutual water.
So a water meter shall be installed if not already there and water meter readings shall be taken and reported on annually, on an annual basis to the planning board.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think that's all I had.
So second as amended?
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Janet. Have a good night.
Thank you, Janet.
Bye.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I mean, I'll have it next week sometime, but I mean, that, you don't need it tomorrow.
No, next week is five, uh, since we're reducing some of the stuff.
All right, thank you.
Good night.
Thank you. And moving right along, we're going to talk about M T A communities update, which is boy, I have to, okay, here we go.
So M T A communities update, I, um, Patty, myself, Shari, and Corey went to the select board the other night and we kind of gave them an update on N D T A communities. We told them we were for them in March of twenty twenty-two. And then we, section three A of the zoning act, you know, said we have to have multi-family districts of reasonable size, et cetera. Um, if the town does not comply, the town is not eligible for housing choice initiative, local capital projects fund, or mass works infrastructure grants. We submitted the form for twenty twenty-two and thus were in compliance in twenty twenty-two. An action plan must be submitted to D H C D by January thirty-first with a compliance model. The compliance model came out at the end of November, a month late. And so full compliance for commuter rail communities is by December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-four. The compliance model requires testing of our multi-family districts to see if the town has twelve hundred thirty-nine required units for Sichuan and the minimum land area of fifteen acres.
So that's what we need to hit by twenty twenty-four, get it to twenty twenty-four?
Right, we have to zone for it.
Right.
Right.
Okay.
So the N D T V district in Greenwood, D C N is currently zoned for density of sixteen units per acre by right and thirty-six by special permit. We believe, excuse me, it's twelve point seven acres and has a unit capacity of one forty-five. North Sichuan Outer Village is currently zoned for density of fifteen units per acre by right and twenty-four by special permit. We believe it is twenty-one point five acres and has a unit capacity of four sixty-five. These two units are re-zoned at the minimum acreage density, total thirty-four point two acres with a capacity of six hundred ten units. This means that we need to add more acreage to get the required number of units. We are, however, awaiting confirmation. We've had emails into D H C D for over a month to try to get clarification on acreage calculation so that the numbers can be finalized.
So before you.
The compliance model automatically takes out some unsuitable area like wetlands, zone A. Um, it seems to be taking out our flood plain and Salt Marsh and Thailand's conservation district. So.
So just before you go, Karen, you went through that pretty quick. So Green Bush is sixteen by right, thirty-six by special permit?
The N D T V district, the same district in which Mr. Tedeschi's project is working in.
N D, N D T V, okay. And then North Sichuan Outer Village?
Right, that's fifteen units per acre by right.
Yep.
Um.
And then how many by special permit?
Twenty-four by special permit. And we were able to put that in when we were doing the North Sichuan zoning in twenty-one.
Right.
Because they, the governor, the governor had just decreed this whole thing.
And then, so then we had a total of thirty-four acres and how many?
We, potentially six hundred ten, if our numbers are right. Okay?
Yep. I just wanted to make that clear.
We, well, the numbers might not be right, so I don't.
Well, it's our current estimate, so.
It's our current estimate.
If you have a better number, you can tell me, but.
I'm gonna get to that, I'm gonna get to that.
All right.
So we have been testing, we've been testing, we've been testing those in the compliance model and we've also tested some other areas. We've tested the North River Neighborhood in Green Bush. Multi-family is already zoned in twelve units per acre by right, twenty-four by special permit. It has a potential for six hundred twenty-five units on thirty-one point two acres. It gets the town to twelve hundred thirty-five with one zoning change.
For sure.
Yeah, we're hoping that, that's why I got. We tested the G B C district in Green Bush, that's Green Bush Village Center. It's already zoned for multi-family at twelve units per acre by right, twenty-four by special permit. It would add potentially three hundred forty-one units. Adding the G B C alone will not bring the town into compliance. A lot of land area is also subtracted there because it's in the zone A. We think we should leave that zoning as is. The G W B, the Gateway Business District in Green Bush is multi-family already zoned at twelve units per acre by right, twenty-four by special permit, would add four hundred thirty-eight units. Adding G W B alone will not bring compliance. You would, if you, G B C and G W B together would bring us to compliance, but we recommend leaving the G W B zoning as is. North Sichuan Village Center is not zoned for multi-family. It's zoned for mixed use because you want your mixed use in your centers so that you have vibrancy, so you have some business and you have some residential above. So we recommend leaving that alone. It's gonna be up to the town over the next two years to decide what next steps to take to bring the town into compliance. That means we have three town meetings. Fall twenty-three, spring twenty-four, and fall twenty-four. Couple of other points.
If we go on that, just tell me what the compliance target is again.
Twelve thirty-nine.
Twelve hundred thirty-nine units and fifty acres?
Yes. It's based on, we're a commuter rail community, so we have to have fifteen percent of our housing stock, which is based on the twenty twenty census, which I think is eight thousand two hundred and forty.
And is it one or the other? Or is it just, if we had twelve hundred thirty-nine units and forty acres, would it matter?
I don't know yet. I don't know yet. Um, we're not tearing down anything to achieve this. This is, this is zoning and it's all about unit capacity and, you know, density. We've been, we've met with the T A at least three times on this. We're keeping him informed. We met with M A P C on Tuesday. They are putting our data into the compliance model for free. They're running it for free. They think that we're ahead of the game because we already have the D C N zoning. We're doing essentially what, what you, what the state wants. We increased our areas around train stations to have more housing. And so that, that's the goal of this, the state is short on housing. So M A P C has our data now, they're running it. So hopefully, the goal is in the next two weeks, they'll run the model and then we'll meet with them again and they, maybe they can tell us where we're making mistakes in the model. It was, um, I sent you guys an email the other day with some information. Um, some of that is good information to look at. Um, I went to a South Shore Coalition meeting today, Shari and I sat in on the Zoom meeting. Um, they indicated towns can lose state subsidy for housing authorities if they don't comply. And so that's, that's been happening.
It's actually happened.
Yes, it's happened.
While they.
While they.
Running.
Et cetera. I mean, they didn't give us a list of places, but some people didn't even do the initial compliance step. They did go in this, in the South Shore Coalition today. We're one of three communities um, that M A P C is working on right now, running the compliance model on our town because, um, you know, I kind of asked them pretty, you know, I spoke to our guy in, um, November and we, I felt we got in touch and he's the guy who is, who did the zoning for North Sichuan. So M A P C is familiar with what they designed for North Sichuan with the input of the town of Sichuan. And so it's been noted that, you know, Sichuan, they're working on testing the model. You know, they say that we're not supposed to be counting mixed use. Um, you know, and they don't really have a good answer about that, um, but, you know, maybe there's a way to, you know, we, we don't allow multi-family in North Sichuan Village Center. Maybe there's a way to, you know, incentivize. If, if we have to put multi-family eventually in North Sichuan Center, um, maybe there's a way to incentivize the, the mixed use. But right now, the way we're leaning right now, based on all the information that we have, is to go for the North River Neighborhood District and we're supposed to have a minimum of fifteen units per acre by right. We're already at twelve units per acre. So it would just be going up three units. But this is all dependent on how the model, you know, the models run out. And if we entered the data as we've been reading it and understanding it currently, that would be our first proposal for the action plan. And mind you, it's an action plan, it can change.
One of the staffs doesn't want to come forward and post up some weird places that doesn't align and nobody can figure out which one would be out there. So hopefully, M A P C can figure that out.
So hopefully, M A P C can figure it out and then, you know.
Let us know what's wrong.
Let us know what's wrong and, I mean, they're gonna, you know, and if we, you know, we have one more meeting before January thirty-first, we'll. We'll update you again then and we can make, we can make some decisions of what we think should be in the action plan. But right now, if the North River Neighborhood District gets us forced to twelve thirty-five, can't see why that wouldn't be good enough.
Karen, just one question, like, do you think that with the state, you know, putting all these mandates on us, unfunded mandates on us. And like threatening to take away everything except for our birthdays, like if we don't do it. Like, do you think that they'd be amenable to maybe like throwing us like a MWRA hookup or water to? Because they, they want us to comply with, you know, a number of residential units and we're having enough trouble. Like keeping water for, you know, and having a volume of water for the residents that are here now, but they want us to increase it.
Right, but you have, you understand, we only have to zone for these.
They don't have to.
But we don't actually have to build D C N.
I know, but it's still, it would be nice if they threw like, you know, a sixty.
Yeah, with the policy objective, with the, with the.
The policy objective is to have more housing in the state.
And we can't support.
We cannot, no, I agree, we cannot, no.
Twelve hundred thirty-nine units on our water system.
We cannot support this number of units, but, I mean, th- this is what it is, this is what they're telling us. And I'm being directed that the town still wants to apply for these grants. They haven't said, but their, the implication is it might not just be these grants, it might be all-state grants.
Oh, no, no, I know, I, I realize like that they're, yeah, they're gonna take away Christmas and like New Years and stuff like that if we don't do it, they're, they're really.
So we still have, I mean, we have to submit this action plan, but we still have time to talk about the action. I mean, we don't have to be in full compliance till December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. We have time to bring the dialogue along in the town to what we should really do to achieve this.
I, again, I'm, I'm fine, like, I, I understand, like, it's not worth, like, fighting because this is, like, all stick.
I agree with you.
That there's no carrot, there's no like, hey, we will help you out with the fact that like you don't have enough, like, water capacity in the town to like. To actually do this housing that we want you to zone for, and the next step that they're gonna do is they're gonna say. Make those houses happen and like ma- make those buildings happen, they're gonna keep on building down the road.
But. But, but just be, be aware, you are making it happen already, because.
Yeah, yeah, because this is.
You know, we have projects in Green Bush that are being built. We have, I mean, ultimately when sewer comes to North Situate, project, North Situate will redevelop, but you, you are making it happen now.
But is this something that, like, then we should talk with our, like, state representative or state senator about saying like. Hey, we are getting these unfunded mandates for zoning, you know, put on us and we're making this happen. We're already stretched thin on water, like, who do you think we should talk to about that? Because I wanna get, I wanna get an MWRA hookup out of this, especially if they're gonna like jam all this housing down.
Well, I think we have. So we know that, uh, Charlie May can push this.
Well, we should ditch before we build a treatment plant.
Yeah.
I, yes, I know, I know.
So we better hurry.
You know, but we know that Charlie May can push this, and they're kind of, and it would be, this is a Mar Hill, she's full of war, but there's never been any point to this.
No.
So we're waiting for that and I think everybody has those questions, like, what do you wanna give us for doing that? So I think that, I think when she gets her people in place, we might hear a little more, like you said, you've had questions out for a month. If we don't know that you're not answering because there was gonna be a government shift, who are we gonna answer that email? If nobody answers anything, so, so the message with you.
Well, I think six-foot concrete, probably.
Dear Bob. Well, to your point, I, I will recommend, you know, I sent you that email on this joint meeting with the selectmen.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, now, I am gonna add water and sewer to that meeting as a meeting topic. And I think that is a legitimate point to bring up in that meeting.
Okay.
And I, any other things that you want to bring up?
Well, I think, I think also if you're going back to, to the state to say, here's our compliance plan. You have to be abundantly clear that all this does is create the opportunity. But there's no infrastructure to make this happen, so this is vapor housing, right?
Yeah.
Unless we have the infrastructure to support it, I, I think you really need to be super clear on that. And, and then I think, you know, part of, part of pushing this is through not just the A C D, but through our state representatives too.
Karen, I have another question on that, well, not on this in particular, but. The state hasn't got to the point of, there's no sort of like, uh, boilerplate zoning that they're gonna require for multi-family. So in other words, could we enact whatever sort of form-based code or design standards or stringent zoning requirements for these multi-family units or this? So that's another thing we have in our pocket.
That's, that's why we, that's why we, we seem to be ahead of the game. We've already put standards that Situate thought about that are for us, but, you know, that's an important thing.
Yeah, especially if we're, I think we have to add new acres or new districts or whatever, we can kind of choose the look and feel.
And MAPC assured us that we are way ahead of so much others because we already done that.
Yeah, I, I, I still think, you know. Your objective is to build houses. We can zone however many we want, we don't have the resources to support it, right?
Right.
And without the resources to support it, it's, you know, you're just chasing a tail.
It's a moot point.
Well, I'm gonna talk to Kingston and Cohasset, Kingston supposedly already has an approved plan. And Cohasset's already submitted.
They weren't going to.
Um, so I'm gonna talk to those people, I just found that information out today. So, um, that's where I think we are, we will have, we will have a lot more information to let you know on January twenty-sixth. And where we could make some, um, more informed decisions, hopefully, this action plan is very. We can't exactly figure out at the moment how to print it out, um, it seems to be one of these things that's that you fill in the information submit. But we'll, we'll work on that before January twenty-sixth, we are trying very hard, um, on this. And so that's, that's where we are.
I'm with Bob, I think we should extract a connection for the MWRA, cancel our new water treatment plant and just have.
Well, remember, remember forty R, forty R would have given us money for schoolchildren and all this other stuff. But we needed the selectmen to sign off on the sewer.
We need, Kevin Cafferty was supposed to sign, we couldn't, we don't have, we didn't have the capacity.
We didn't have the capacity.
I can guarantee the capacity.
Right.
And my point is that they're, they're creating the incentive to create all this housing. So you gotta go back to them and say, we need the resources to make this happen, otherwise, this is a paper exercise.
And I think that people have pointed out that, you know, places don't have sewer. Don't, don't have the wire for all this stuff.
Right.
And their answer is, well, you could do treatment plants. There's various possibilities of things that could be done further down the line, but all you're doing right now is zoning for it.
And, and not yet.
Yeah, I would say.
I guess my point is that's, that's, you know, burying your head in the sand is what it is.
Yes, it is totally.
Burying your head in.
So if anybody has.
It's claiming I created housing when you really had it, right?
If anybody has any items.
And I'm really supportive of creating more housing because I think we need it in the state.
But whatever you want to see on the selectmen's agenda, could you please get it to me? Because we'll be coming up with that agenda in the next two weeks, three weeks. And so right now, I will let them know that, we'll try to do it from six-thirty to seven-thirty off-camera. That people have a hard time making it at five forty-five.
And you know that Mr. Morris will be there. Well, it's a public meeting. I know, I understand that, but he will be there. And you.
Right, who's there?
Huh? I don't care either, but a stormwater won't be in it.
So you said we're gonna do six-thirty?
Yeah, I'm gonna tell them that, that, I'm gonna suggest that back, saying that I talked with you guys tonight, six-thirty works better. That five forty-five really doesn't, doesn't work.
I'm telling what date it was.
February ninth, it's right on your regular planning board night.
Yeah, no, I just wanna get it on the calendar.
Well, selectmen wanna put, talk about stormwater, absolutely, they want to talk about stormwater. And if you listen to what I said to the selectman the other night, you know, they asked me what my priorities were for, um, coming here. I said M T A compliance and accessory dwellings, because those are the things that you've indicated we wanted to work on.
So we know that since we're not listening to them about stormwater, they went to the board of selectmen to report.
Yes.
I indicated to the board of selectmen that we make all of our deadlines. And that on some of these permit applications that we get, it takes not just one, not just two. Mostly three or four times to get a project through. And Mr. Vignani quite correctly noted that if, if you have thirty days, a developer wants it in ten.
Twenty.
So. That's all I have for M T A compliance. We're working.
It's, it's exciting, don't you, like, you don't know what you're doing up against, great.
There was a, there was an interesting email that you sent with all the links and stuff.
Yeah.
Through.
Yeah, great.
And if you look through it, I mean, Situate is mentioned and what, on that. I think it's the last link that talks of, that, there's a link to a study.
Yeah.
And Situate is mentioned and we, we have some more progressive things that we, we've done. So.
Yeah.
Okay. So we'll move on to all business, new business, okay, and we have a new approval?
I approve three minutes by December fifteenth, twenty twenty-two.
Your second.
Second.
On the paper.
I, um.
For the record, I wasn't here, so.
You're lucky to a model, yeah, you're spending money.
I owe you.
Okay.
I approve the requisition of three thousand two hundred ninety-seven dollars and fifty-seven, fifty cents. To Chesley Consulting for peer review services for thirty-three new Driftway, seven dollar terrace. And for four thousand nine hundred eighty-five dollars to Chesley Consulting for peer review services for sixty-one Driftway. For six thousand two hundred eighty-two dollars, fifty cents to Tech Inc. for peer review services. For Laurelwood lots three, four, and five, for two thousand three hundred thirty dollars to Tech Inc. for peer review services. For five fifty-six first parish road for a hundred thirty dollars and forty-eight cents to Gay House Media for legal ads. For two hundred thirty-three dollars and eighty-five cents to Karen Joseph for mileage. For one thousand eight hundred forty-seven dollars and twenty cents to Boston Witten for peer review services. For Seaside in Situate, for four hundred fifty dollars to Merrill Corp. for peer review services for twenty-three Meeregate Street.
Second.
On the paper.
Alright.
Somebody, what do you have, Tony, please?
Yes. We left CPC the other night, just to let you know. We approved three hundred thousand dollars for the first phase of the P F forty-four project. Can I say? What can I say? We approved, I think it was eighty-two thousand dollars for the Cudworth house renovations, that thing, place got scummed. And so, plus, they don't have enough parking and there's a whole issue with parking.
Cudworth campus.
Yeah, this campus, such as it might be. We approved money for the, um. Dinosaur playground that's gonna be rehabbed. The pickleball court, no. That could, I want. The, um, vote, the Cole Parkway gazebo has been tabled. Discussion, we did a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to, um, do the driveway at the Mordecai Lincoln property. Also, that house, there's two houses and a barn. The main house is filled with antiques. And they have to get somebody in there to evaluate it and then auction all that stuff off.
Just the inside, people think you're auctioning off the whole home, it's just the insides.
No, no, just the insides. So, and then somebody's making noises about wanting to turn the barn back into an antique store. And so who knows what's gonna happen with that? The, um. Sunlight, the sun sets on whatever it is down on First Cliff is still. Ippy because somebody right in the middle of all of it.
On McDonald's.
Yep, McDonald's property. And so it's been mentioned that from going forward, we will make sure that we have all our Ts crossed and Is dotted.
And nobody does.
And nobody does, because that's what happened with them.
I know.
Lots of them died, so it ended up in, um.
Okay.
Okay, so that's all I have.
So I listened to Odo about zoning last night and, um. I think I'm gonna ask Karen to write a comment to the zoning board. The way it's designed, they have two common driveways with four houses off of them. They changed the, um, traffic, it used to be a circle and now it's just like one straight up a hall, they're gonna get a fire truck, they said they got. They, they, it's a pool by the fire company, but that, they would have to listen to us because it's a four A B. But they're looking for comments and I did speak to Karen about that and, um. They're, they're not gonna be here until March, they haven't been since November and something to the peer review came in too late, now that goes like back and forth. So it was a short sweep meeting about stormwater, there are no basements up here because you're not gonna believe this, but it's very wet. If you can believe that.
So, a figure.
In the marsh, so they cannot have any basements done, that's too hot, too much water. Um, if it, if it goes according to what the design looks like, it's gonna be very attractive. It, it's gonna be very, very nice, it's a lot of space done and what a, yeah, most beautiful thing to have in the fire hazard park, which I saw over the marsh. Um, and, and the design is pretty, they look like farmhouse, so hopefully, and these people, and zoning is really, really careful. To keep saying we don't want another thing to happen that happened out there yet. We have super, super careful that we don't want that to happen.
Why is that really bad?
Yes.
For what, for what was proposed?
Oh, man. I look at it all day.
What, what was proposed is supposed to look like the Jake the Patch House. And they bought it so much, that's what put this, so yes, really super conservative about making sure it fits into the design, so, uh. I don't know, the traffic is, everybody knows about, up in the air about Maple Street, Winter Street and the Odo Bucket stop signs and what they're gonna do, but, um. The people who building this seem much nicer than the people who built the bucket, they're, they're much more, um, open to ideas and, and with this. So, and maybe they're gonna be like I said in March. And, um, so if you wanna, I, I, someplace I know, uh, a lot of users, design sketch of what Odo Bucket looks like.
It's probably on the Z B A webpage.
Yeah, so it used to be a loop, but now it's just one and there's, um, I guess there are two common driveways that have four houses off of them. But you're very clear to tell people that, um, that we have to listen to state mandates. Common driveways are local zoning, so they don't, they don't have to pay attention, but they will listen to any, in all comments. And that is it, Karen, who helped us?
Majestate Jim, nothing to call Karen, can someone, there was an interesting article in about that there ever is one in New Coastal Mariner. About, um, a housing project that's going on in Dover. And what was interesting, I mean, they're itty-bitty little houses, they're not more than, what was it, even seven hundred square?
So they're seven square feet or something.
Something really tiny, but because they are, but the, um, a catchment for Rock.
Rochester.
Rochester. A single, a one-bedroom is just over one thousand dollars. For, uh, an affordable unit.
In Dover, I see.
In Dover, as opposed to down the street here, a one-bedroom is just under two thousand.
Well, this is for rental.
Huh?
This is for rental, you're saying?
Yes.
So Dover is a thousand?
Dover's a thousand.
Yeah, because of the surrounding communities.
Because of, of the, the catchment that they're in.
Yeah, in Dover.
A three-bedroom would be thirteen hundred dollars.
Guess moved to Dover.
Let's move to Dover. More, more statues would be.
Yes, so I'm sorry, I had to.
No, that's, that's fine.
Yeah.
Jim looked into questioning if we could, if the town was which the Rockton area. And he told me that the, um, it's only a hundred dollars difference. And so it's not, it's.
Not worth it, that's something.
Not, not worth it, something, something's wrong.
Sounds wrong.
Dover's, there's something wrong, Wellesley's on one side of them, isn't it?
Yeah.
Who's on the other side?
But they cross over, and they, but they cross over to like Rochester, Hampshire, I, 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 I know.
It's Rochester, Massachusetts.
I, I don't remember.
No, it's, it's.
It's far down. Isn't it?
Rochester is more southeast, but they could be, you know, don't.
It's on that side then.
Does that get into Stoughton?
I don't, I don't know my district.
Before Stoughton.
No doubt.
Is it?
Yes.
Oh. Oh.
It's down on Plainville.
That's the nice side. That's the curb.
No, Dover's that off route too. Plainville's way.
Dover is Dover, Sherburne, it's.
Dover, Sherburne, Wellesley, Nathan.
Well, yeah.
And they're not a tall off that way.
I wonder if they call it the rest of it. But I think it's those like curb on the outside of it, just the border side.
Oh, oh, that was two hundred and five, okay.
I think it's like that, what I can buy, move this one in here, so. Well, we're always gonna Dover, so okay.
I'll be here for it.
I guess I don't really have much to report. We're, we're busy. Next meeting is gonna be a busy, a busy meeting. We have a couple withdrawals of applications. Um, Board one, four, three is withdrawing their application.
They're not gonna do it at all?
No, they're gonna do a coffee shop. They're gonna do as is. So they don't need a, they don't need a site plan.
Good, okay.
Um, we have a couple of accessory dwellings. We have, um, some, we have Laurelwood next time. We have, um, a couple other, we have Seven Cobra Pool and so we'll be busy.
Can I, what is the, um, select board want with the accessory dwellings?
No, change this one.
We want, we want to change accessory dwellings.
Okay, I don't, but you might, I don't.
You've expressed concern that you wanted to work on accessory dwellings.
Some of that, yeah. When the language is self similar, market forces.
You wanted to make sure that in, one of the first, one of the things you wanted to make sure is that this has to be your primary residence. Okay, so that, that is not in there specifically right now. I mean, that's the intent, but if you remember, you approved one last year and, um, Camp Council told me you're not gonna win in Gordon. I've been talking a lot with, um, a plenty word member from Hingham. Hingham is also trying to change their accessory dwelling. So they are, they'll be undergoing public hearings, um, uh, I think they start on twenty third.
I don't know. I tried to log into them. They don't have any public access on their website to, to Zoom meetings. So I think our website's kind of awful, but I think there's a place to connect.
So I tried. We're, we're busy. We have a lot, we have a lot going, going on, um, you know, so.
Would you like a motion then?
Please.
Move to Jay.
Second.
All in favor?
I.
Thank you. Good night.